Consequences to those decisions, and we pray for continued wisdom and growth in our great county, Lord. We thank you for the blessing of just everything you've done and all that you're going to do. Just protect our law enforcement that are out there on the roads and all of our first responders and everywhere they're at, and continue to be with us, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Don't have any chair comments this morning. We have a consent agenda. Commissioners?
Approved. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment this morning? Anyone here wish to address the commission in public? And by the way, everyone here, welcome. Good morning. The business items this morning, we're going to take up the appointment of the Fannie County Library Board. I understand that Ms. Toller is not here. Commissioner Jones, are you taking that up?
I will.
Would you have the floor, please?
As an ex-official member of the library board, I'm proud to bring forth a nomination for a reappointment, and that would be Marcia Wright, who has just completed her first term and is willing to serve the second. And so I would offer a motion to place her name on the roster as a board member of the Fannie County Library Board.
This is for a four-year term, sir?
Four-year term, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to appoint Marcia Wright to a four-year term to the library board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Wright. We have some changes to the sequence in our agenda at the request of the planning office as well as the clerk. We want to take up the waiver request for 3104 West Jones, and I'm advised by the county counselor that we should have a brief executive session to discuss the advice of council. And are you ready for that executive session?
Yes.
And those persons that you want to have in attendance?
I believe the administrator and the assistant administrator and myself.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
It's a move, Mr. Chairman. Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. We'll be back into session at 8:45. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session. Well, as soon as we get to the appointed hour, we can't come out early.
We return to regular county commission agenda?
I'll second.
It's been moved that we go out of executive session, back to regular session. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll confirm that no action was taken. The next item that we're going to take up today at the request of the clerk and the engineer is a waiver request for 3104 West Jones. And McKenzie, do you have a presentation, please? And please announce for the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. Before you this morning, you were asked to consider and approve a waiver request for 3104 West Jones Avenue for the construction of a trash enclosure within the right-of-way. Larry Smith, the owner of Skeeter's Body Shop, has requested a waiver from the board of county commissioners to have a trash enclosure within the road right-of-way at his shop's location at 3104 West Jones Avenue. In 2023, Mr. Smith made improvements to his property, including the addition of a new building that was approved through site plan and the permitting process. The construction, the final construction, though, had significant deviations from the original approved site plan drawings. That included two trash enclosures that were constructed within the road right-of-way without prior review or approval. There was also the addition of a fenced-in area that pushed the parking stalls farther north, and that's part of the reason why the trash enclosures were pushed north into the road right-of-way. The west trash enclosure is causing visibility issues at the corner of Anderson and Jones Avenue. Mr. Smith has agreed to move that west trash enclosure, but would like approval from the board to keep the east trash enclosure at its current location. If you can go to the map. The next page. I think it's one more page. One more page. There's a map on there. So this is the approved site plan. You can see there wasn't a fenced-in area. And then if you can go to the next page, now, Sam. And then you can see that that's where that fenced-in area was that pushed those parking stalls farther to the north. So the one that they're asking for the waiver request for is that one on that east side that you can see the location pointed out on the map. The east trash enclosure is also causing some visibility issues, not quite as bad as the one on the west, and is located about 30 feet from the edge of the road, the pavement of the road. So the alternatives before you this morning are the board of county commissioners may approve the waiver request to allow for the east trash enclosure to stay within the road right-of-way, or the board of county commissioners may not approve the waiver request and allow for the east trash enclosure to stay within the road right-of-way. Staff is unable to recommend approval of this waiver request. And this morning, we do have our engineering consultant here, if you have any questions for him on his opinion of these two trash enclosures. And then the contractor is here also to represent the property owner.
Very good. I would introduce the engineer, and let's hear from him.
Yep. This is C.W. Harper. He's with Kirkham Michael Engineering.
The primary one is the west one, and he has agreed to move that one. The east one, as was stated, you can see in the pictures that goes down, or back up, I guess, is the east one here. It is blocking the road. It would be good if it could be moved further to the west so that it wasn't quite in the site triangle so much. It'd be better if it was moved completely out of the right-of-way, but it does look... I mean, it looks nice and all, but it is a hazard for the traveling public.
Questions for the engineer or for McKenzie? All right. Let's then hear from the contractor on behalf of the owner. Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Randy Smart with Smart Construction, local contractor here in Garden City.
Both the paving underneath these trash dumpsters at each end encroach out into the county's property from the right-of-way off Taylor, correct?
Yes.
And both bends are situated on Fannie County property?
That's correct.
And the plans did not provide for a structure to be placed on Fannie County property, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Why should we grant the waiver?
Well, we didn't have a lot of options where to put the trash enclosures, and we feel like we've made substantial improvements to the edge of town there. We made it. It's a nice building. It's nice trash enclosures. It really does look nice from the curb. And we think that the west one is correct. It probably needs to go. It's blocking the traffic. This one, I don't feel like it blocks the traffic very much at all. And Mr. Smith said he'd also be willing, excuse me, be willing to make that a breakaway, make it out of wood instead of metal, so if a vehicle hits it, it would break away and not cause so much injury.
The... Questions from the commissioners?
The construction of the enclosures are, I thought they were wooden stucco.
So it is, we can change the post where it mounts to the ground and make them less substantial where the... So, yeah, there's, they're a wood frame with stucco over the top of them.
The east one is, basically, that's a private driveway that goes into his business.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, so from the picture, if you pull up with the vehicle, you can see all the way to Anderson Road. The traffic can see you also. So Skeeter did those, Mr. Smith put those in without my regard. I wasn't involved in that process. But that being said, when he put those up, he sure had the best of intentions. He definitely improved the way that place looks out there.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I drove out by and had a look. There's a nice-looking installation. I have to give Skeeter credit for that. What would happen if those two were picked up from where they are presently located and moved down, put together about midpoint?
So, yeah, so the traffic that goes through there, it's a one-direction traffic, and it would definitely... You're saying leave them in the right-of-way? Just move them closer to the center?
Yeah, so that they don't, to me, it's not, the breakaway is not as important of an issue as is the hindrance of visibility.
So what he was suggesting was, the west one, he was going to move it all the way to the south where that car is setting by that, it'd be about, I don't know what it is, 50 feet to the south where that car's setting next to that gate? He's going to move that one there where it's totally on his property? And then hopefully leave the east one, was what his goal was?
I don't know how the trash truck's going to get in there and get hooked up to...
So, if I could show you?
Sure.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, okay. It's...
On the left.
It's a car that's kind of parallel parked to the fence there, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the outside of the fence. And be accessible for the trash truck.
Well, okay.
Commissioner Jase?
Would he be willing to move that east one, as our engineer spoke, toward the west?
I can't speak for Mr. Smith. He didn't mention that. I assume that he would, but he'd prefer to leave it where it's at. It's just accessible for his deliveries. All his deliveries come into the east side right there, and all of them have wrappers and pallets and stuff, and that was the best place for that to be. Plus, it's, the way it faces his building, any wind or anything, it keeps all the trash that blows within that enclosure. It keeps it from crossing the street. I can't speak about what is...
Understood.
How he'd accept moving it to the west. I know he would rather than lose it.
Okay. Any other questions for the builder on behalf of the owner? If not, I'll hear from McKenzie again, please. Thank you. McKenzie, I think there's no one... McKenzie, I think there's no one in the room, including the four Commissioners, who doesn't believe that this work that was done on West Jones by Mr. Smith and this business and all those involved is vitally important to our community. It's a wonderful building. It looks really good. The problem is those structures were not designed nor. They were not designed nor approved to be in that place, and no one from the county approved to encroach on the right of way. In your opinion, McKenzie, can both trash containers be moved where the owner suggests where the car is parked parallel on the west side of the building?
Have both of them in that location, you said? I believe that there, there should be enough room to move both of those trash enclosures over there.
That's my question for McKenzie. Does any other Commissioners have any questions in response? All right. Anything else, McKenzie?
Nope.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant the waiver request that he will move the west one and leave the east one.
Mister Chairman, I'll second that with an addition.
Well, I think we ought to vote on the motion. If you want to, if you don't want to second it, you don't have to, but.
Okay. I still feel, though, that we need to retain the county's, if we grant a waiver, as Larry just stated, they have it permanently. What if someday the county actually needs that, that piece of property underneath of that? And I think we need to retain that in the motion.
I'll modify my motion to put that in too.
Then I'll second that.
Seconded to allow the removal of the west, let the east remain, with an understanding that it may be removed in the future as needed by the county. Does that understand the motion and the second?
That's correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Interesting.
All right, Mr. Dries, do you have a motion?
No, sir.
All right. We will wait until we have a full commission to take up this issue on the next agenda item. I think that's on June.
Third.
Third. We'll table it until then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Back on our regular agenda, McKenzie, you went too far. She stepped out. Yeah, we want to take up the H R R R Engineering Design, High Risk Rural, Rural Roads. Go to speech class, say that. Good morning.
Good morning again Chairman and Commissioners. So this morning, you, the Board of County Commissioners is requested to consider and approve the agreement with Kirkham Michael for the design engineering for the twenty twenty-five High Risk Rural Road Project. Kirkham Michael has submitted an agreement for the Board's consideration to prepare the project plans for Finney County's fiscal year twenty twenty-five High Risk Rural Road Project, also referenced as H triple R. The county has contracted Kirkham Michael to perform the functions of the county's engineer. The H triple R agreement with Kirkham Michael will extend their services as the county engineer for this project. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five H triple R project will include the following improvements to Maple Street from Taylor Avenue to VFW Road. And that includes adding two-foot paved shoulders with a rock edge, adding retroreflective pavement markings to the existing paved road, and to mark or remove hazards adjacent to the roadway. Staff also plans to mill and overlay the section of Maple Street concurrent with the H triple R project. So the alternatives before you this morning are the Board of County Commissioners may approve and authorize the county administrator to sign the agreement with Kirkham Michael and, or the Board may not approve and authorize the county administrator to sign the agreement with Kirkham Michael. And staff recommends alternative one, to approve and authorize the county administrator, administrator to sign the agreement. The fiscal impact of this, the cost is estimated to be fifty-five thousand, and that will be paid out of the road and bridge budget.
Questions for Commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I'll move we approved the contract with Kirkham Michael for fifty-five thousand out of road and bridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
And authorize administrator to sign.
Is that okay, Mister Second?
Yes.
All right, very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve alternative number one, as indicated and in the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Administrator's authorized to sign. Next on our agenda is recognition of National Nurses Week. Administrator, you have the floor.
Annually, for the last few years, we have provided for the proclamation, or at least recognition, for National Nurses Week. I place before you in your hands, in essence, the, an abbreviated version, in essence, for you to read off in recognition of, of that, as, as May is National Nurses Month, and May sixth through the twelfth was National Nurses Week.
Very good. Anything else from Commissioners? If not, the proclamation is this, May is National Nurses Month. National Nurses Week was May sixth through the twelfth, an annual recognition of the dedication nurses embody and the compassionate care they show to their patients every day. We celebrate and recognize the important role that nurses play and the contributions they make to the healthcare industry. This year's theme is, quote, nurses make the difference, end quote, honoring the incredible people who are nurses who embody the spirit of compassion and care in every healthcare setting. Congratulations to our nurses for this honor, and we hope that when you see one, you'll tell them thanks for all the work that they do. In the proclamation mode, we'll next hear from Skyler Sors, our E M S Director, regarding the consideration of Emergency Medical Services Week in Finney County. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Skyler Sors with Finney County E M S. I'll just give you a little background. In nineteen seventy-four, President General Ford authorized E M S Week to celebrate E M S practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. The National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians partners with the American College of Emergency Physicians to lead annual E M S Week activities. Together, N A E M T and A C E P are working to ensure that important contributions of E M S practitioners in safeguarding the health, safety, and well-being of their communities are fully celebrated and recognized. This year marks the fiftieth, fiftieth anniversary of E M S Week. The seven days of E M S Week have a theme that represents the diverse nature of E M S. Yesterday was Health Wellness and Resilience. Today is E M S Education Day. Tuesday is Safety Tuesday. Wednesday is E M S for Children Day. Thursday is Save Alive for CPR and Stop the Bleed. Friday is E M S Recognition Day, and Saturday is E M S Remembering Day.
Questions for Skyler from the Commissioner? Hearing none, I have been provided a proclamation and ask for the careful consideration by the Commission. To the people of Kansas and Finney County, Kansas greetings. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services have traditionally served as the safety net of America's healthcare system, and. Whereas, emergency medical teams consist of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and approximately two-thirds of all emergency medical services providers are volunteers. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical team, service teams, whether care or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas, injury prevention and the appropriate use of the E M S system will help reduce national healthcare costs. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Finney County, State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth, May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four as Emergency Medical Services Week. In Finney County, we encourage all residents to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And Skyler, to you and your team, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I'll offer the motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve and adopt the twenty twenty-four National E M S Week proclamation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I've signed.
Thank you.
While we're doing our paperwork, we'll hear from our county appraiser, Maria. We have a contract that we need to approve.
Yes. I'm Maria Castillo, the Finney County Appraiser, and I am here today so that you could sign. It's an annual contract that you guys signed for McCullough and Associates. And he provides our, he assists us with all our analytical work for Finney County, like our depreciation studies, neighborhood analysis, land models, income stuff, and pretty much helps whenever I have a question or, or I need any additional information from his, from him, so.
Mister Administrator, this is a thirty-eight thousand dollar contract.
Yes, sir.
Is it paid monthly?
I believe.
Year, yes, monthly.
It's paid monthly.
Monthly, it's broken up in monthly. Yeah, yeah, over the twelve months.
And the source of the funds for approval of this contract?
Is through the, her budget.
My budget.
Adequate funds for both payment and cash basis?
Correct.
Our auditors.
Yes.
So proud of this discussion.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the contract with McCullough and Associates.
Is there a second?
Added amount.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the McCullough contract as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Finney County Economic Development for their monthly update.
Good morning.
She chopped down another tree.
Well, I do. Thank you.
Good morning, Lona Devol, Finney County Economic Development Corporation. Would you like a monthly report, or would you just like to have me dive into my budget?
Monthly report first and then.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Your budget.
All right, so things that we're working on, workforce development, we just recently got unemployment rates, two point one percent for Finney County, which means we are woefully short of people still. That has not been fixed yet. One of the things that we're working on, we worked with County Attorney Susan Richmire. She's got some interns coming in this summer, and she wanted to find some ways that we could get them more engaged in the community. So that kind of kicked off a, a new launch, if you will, of the Finney County Workforce Connection. So we've had a couple of meetings, and we've got about two months' worth of activities scheduled for not only the county attorney interns, but also other interns who are working in the community, as well as new employees who may have just recently started with their companies. So we're hoping to get an opportunity to really immerse those folks into our community and provide them with a better understanding of what else is available in the community so that we can either keep them here if they're already working, or get them back here after they've served their interns and, and finished their education. Housing development, obviously, still huge. We aren't caught up on that either. We're, we're almost as far behind on rain as we are housing development at this point, so we continue to, to plug along, but it's, it's slow-going, especially with interest rates where they are right now. It's making a real challenge, specifically for our multifamily stuff. We're having a really hard time getting apartments to pencil right now. So that's, that's a little bit tough. And then a lot of focus still on four-year education and beyond in the community. I think you'll, you'll see some exciting stuff happening over the next few months on that, so happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Mine is not a question, but rather a comment and a congratulations. Leadership Kansas was in Garden City last week, and the program for the gathering at Southwind was a history of Finney County. Unfortunately, the presenter had a sudden illness in the hospital. Callie Dyer, our local representative of Leadership Kansas, called upon your office for a presentation, and Shannon Dick did an outstanding job presenting a, not history of Finney County, but the promotion of Finney County with a very wonderful and entertaining slide presentation. And Madam President, he just, remember that when it's time for review and all that good stuff.
It is that time, and he's, he's pretty decent at doing that, isn't he?
I just think it's, it's fun to recognize somebody who did an excellent job with about ten hours of preparation time.
Yeah, not quite that long, but yes, thank you. He is, he is, he is a tremendous asset to this community in many ways.
My last discussion about Leadership Kansas being here was that, that presentation, one word was, really? Really? So some things are really going right, and before I move to your budget request, I have not given the Commissioners any questions for the monthly update? All right. So next on the agenda is the budget request for Finney County Economic Development Corporation and a presentation by the President and CEO. And we'll go ahead and open that budget hearing and hear from you, and thank you for the handouts. I also want to compliment you and your staff for the work that was done in filling out the form. The county's form is a bit cumbersome. But from the Chair's perspective, those outside agencies that take the time to answer the questions and provide the information, provides the, gives us on this side of the bench the chance to see it in the method by which we can gauge all those and don't have to search back and forth. So to all of our outside agencies who have gone to the trouble of filling out the county's form, thank you, and of course, you, you did, and now I will give you for your budget presentation. Lona?
All right, thank you. I have handed out two different things. Some of you weren't able to make it to our annual meeting back in January, so I brought that annual meeting report with me so that you can, you can have the opportunity to go through that. And then I also brought the narrative of our budget request. So for twenty twenty-five, the only increase to members is to the city of Holcomb. We're asking for an additional two thousand from them. So our funding would remain three hundred thousand for Finney County, three hundred and five thousand for the city of Garden City, thirty-four thousand for city of Holcomb, and twenty-five thousand for Garden City Community College. So when we look at what we do, if you will, our primary function is to grow the economy. It's to improve the business climate in Finney County in whatever ways are necessary to do that. You just heard me comment in our update about a lot of the things that weigh into that. Certainly, most people recognize us for industrial recruitment, but that's just really kind of the bright shiny piece that sticks up above the surface, if you will. All the other things we're doing aren't necessarily as easy to spot, but workforce development, housing development, quality of life improvements, and, and education for our workforce is an incredibly important part of what we do and gives us that opportunity to grow the industrial, commercial, and retail projects. So if you look at the valuation from two thousand and seven through twenty twenty-three, you can see that we went from just over two hundred thousand in two thousand and seven to just over five hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. Just for reference, I started. Just for reference, I started with economic development in 2010, and at that time, we were at about 230,000, 250,000, somewhere in there. So Shannon, speaking of Shannon, did some comparisons to other communities. A lot of folks are always interested in, is everybody growing at the same pace, or is one community outpacing the others? So for this comparison, he looked at Liberal Dodge City and Great Bend, and over that same period, those communities had grown at 19.54% in their valuation, while we had increased 52.73%. That's from 2013 to 2023. So looking at that, we grew at 2.7x faster than those other communities that are around us. That helped him to kind of determine how much of the growth should be attributed to inflation versus active recruitment of industry and improvements in the real estate valuation. So about 37% can be attributed to inflation, which means that about 63% is attributed to our efforts to improve the climate within the community. And then we always go through our priority budget with you, just showing you that there, there was a time when I started with economic development, we had a position that really was more of an administrative role. They just answered the phone, took care of QuickBooks, that kind of thing. We have done away with that position. We chose instead to put that, that money into our communications director. So by reallocating those funds, we've gone from having about 30% in administrative cost, now that 1% of our budget is attributed to administrative work. And that's really all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for us.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I don't have a question, Lana. I'd like to ask a favor. For that hypothetical $100,000 house that the state says will be assessed at 11.5%, tell us what a mill is for our viewing public so that we can see what that $500,000 assessed value for the county means? Can you do that?
Well, first of all, I'm trying to, trying to, how much does, how much difference does it make in your budget that we have that much?
Well, yeah, our money's available by property tax.
Well, my apologies. I can't do that on the fly. I should be able to.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Don't ask the chairman neither.
Larry can do it.
Defer.
Yeah.
One mill equals about 500.
Eighty-seven.
You want?
587.
Yeah.
There you go. So your calculator makes that a lot easier.
What we're saying is that mill produces over twice what it did in 2000.
That is correct.
It's okay.
Yes.
I'll be quiet now.
Questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I think you need to also talk about the work you've done on childcare. I admit, for you guys pushing on that, we'd still be at ground zero.
It's been a little exhausting, but we are so excited that we finally have a center, and it's, it's up and running and full of happy little children, so yes, we're very pleased to have the childcare facility in place, and we're hopeful, again, you know, we've talked about before, that when we're dealing with housing developments, we're asking them to reserve space either for childcare or for elementary schools, additional schools as needed, and our housing partners have been really good about reserving that space for us. So hopefully, going forward, we don't end up in the same crunch we were in before.
One of the projects of this commission was the investment in workforce development and showcases.
Mm-hmm.
How does that, the showcases and so forth dovetail with your work on workforce development?
Yeah, so obviously, we have to come at this from a lot of directions. We've been focused for several years on growing our own, which really is about making sure that the students we raise here and educate here have an opportunity to stay here, not just to serve us, but to serve themselves as well. We want to create an opportunity where folks want to remain here and raise their families and build their own careers. So the grow-your-own piece is really where the career showcases play along with us. They give us that opportunity to get in front of not only our own students, we have a really great relationship with Garden City High School and Holcomb High School, so we're in front of those students a lot, but that surrounding area is a little tougher to get to. So having those career showcases where they're bringing us the audience makes it a lot easier for us to make sure that they know we're the hub of their region, and we really want to create jobs that they want, and we want to help them prepare for those jobs as well. So that's probably the biggest carryover point, if you will, between the two. They really work well with our youth development committee.
All right, I would encourage you to continue to work with Joe Coles and our workforce development. Commissioner Driz?
We've drifted off a little bit from your budget, so I'm going to drift a little further.
That's okay.
You know, all the issues we went with childcare, and you've got yourself appointed on the state committee. Are you getting some progress with, to those folks to know how much they're hindering that process, or are they still talking to a wall?
Yeah, no, I, I do think they have a much better understanding. If, if nothing else, the time spent on that committee, we really got to hear from the folks who are engaged directly, especially in the licensing process, because that's really where the juggernaut has been for a long time. I feel like we've seen a really good attempt from those agencies, primarily KDHE and the State Fire and Marshals Office. We've seen a lot of movement where they're, they're understanding better how their lack of communication between themselves creates a challenge for the community and for those childcare providers who are trying to get through that process. So I feel confident that we'll continue to see improvements there. It also gave us a really good opportunity to get in front of the legislative body and help them better understand how important early childhood education and childcare is to our state.
So I thank you for your time well spent going on.
Thank you. I think, I barely remember those 10-hour drive days going to, going to Topeka for meetings by now.
Chairman?
Yes, sir. I move we take this budget under advisement.
Second.
Moved and seconded to take this budget under advisement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to hear from the Fannie County Historical Museum and Society, and please introduce yourself when you get to the podium, sir. Please announce all of those reinforcements that you brought with you.
I will, and I have some handouts as well. Let me do some quick introductions. First, we have three of our 18 board members here. John Wheeler, who is our newly-elected board president, Ray Heineman, who has served three years previously as board president, and Bob Jones, who is one of our longest-serving board members and also leads our finance committee. And they're here as moral support, so thank you. Real briefly.
Now, I'm going to hold you to that briefly part.
I will. Well, before I talk about our year and our budget, yes, thank you. I brought the bucket because it's one of 15 buckets and barrels that we've used over the last eight years to catch leaking water through our roof. Now we're able to repurpose this and the others because of the help you gave us last year from some American Recovery Act funds that we combined with gift dollars, and we now have a new roof on the museum. So we just want to say thank you very much for your support, and that literally is one of the buckets that, that we use to catch water. Okay, for 2025, we are seeking level support, $220,000, which is the same amount that we received last year, and I believe the year before, so this would be a third year. If you look briefly at the handout, I'd just like to direct your attention to the cover. Top left, you see the Gregory Knoll exhibit. You remember Greg Knoll was a World War II soldier killed in 1944 from Garden City. His remains were returned home 79 years later, last summer, and we now have an exhibit telling his story. You see our roof at the upper right being repaired. Lower left, you see Dr. Luther and Artis Fry receiving the Fannie County Horizon Award. And on the right, we don't get his picture taken much, but Todd Roberts, our collection manager, placing one of 80 framed artifacts in some new storages that we were able to provide. If you look on the inside page, there's about 13 other pictures there. It's a lucky number, I know. And I'll touch on a few of those as we go by, but I do hope you'll spend some time later going through those. I think sometimes you may want to ask, so what are we doing? Well, what did we do in 2023? If you go to the blue pages, I just want to hit a few highlights. Last year, we did serve 19,580 people through museum exhibits and, and programs. We saw a 60% increase in guest tours at the William and Letty Fulton House, which dates to 1884, located near the museum, and we staged four revolving exhibits in the museum's front door gallery. All of that was in exhibits. In programs and events, we had 300 people in for 14 free noon and evening history programs. We had about 3,300 people on hand for the 14th Annual Flea Market Festival. We brought in a Civil War reenactor, Troy Crable, from Holcomb to do our Evening in the Past. We had about 80 people at our annual picnic where we had the State Historical Society on hand, talking about new archaeological discoveries in Scott Park. We conducted book signings for two authors, Roxy Yonkey from Colby and Brett Marshall from right here in Garden City, who produced Life and Times of the Buffaloes, a comprehensive history of Garden City High School. And we conducted about, oh, 10 other public events and activities. When we do those events, they're focused on history, but they also do something else. They raise funds, and so we're constantly pedaling that bicycle because we need those funds to operate the museum and carry out the programs and the services that we do for the public. In education, we conducted about 60 public school classroom presentations, also in-house tours. We had a large number of off-site presentations that we provided for local nursing homes, real men, real leaders, families through YMCA, and Garden City Downtown Vision for homeschool and church school organizations in addition to the public schools. And we also developed a collection of traveling trunks of artifacts that teachers in the public schools can check out. In research and related services, we had several dozen history and genealogy researchers at our research library, the Leola Howard Blanchard Research Library. Actually, in a typical year, our library answers about 1,700 questions. Sometimes that's a phone call, sometimes that's a three-day visit with in-house researchers. It, it covers the whole gamut. Probably the most interesting of those this past year, we had a television production crew here doing research and shooting, and they were here from Paris, and I don't mean the one in Texas, it was the one in France, and they were doing a Truman Capote clutter case documentary for public television in Europe. We had the honor of providing the fall, or one of the fall in-service programs for the employees of Fannie County, and though we did have an illness that prevented us this year, as mentioned, we have done the last five welcomes to Garden City for Leadership Kansas. We were called on last year to advise the Kansas State Historical Society, Fannie County Public Library, Fennep Foundation Trust, the Derby Historical Museum, and a new museum in Leavenworth that's being developed at this time. We also provided extensive information and assistance for that book that Brett Marshall produced, Life and Times of the Buffaloes, and we were able to provide our conference room, in addition to all of our events and activities, for 17 other business and family events in the community. Then in artifact and facility preservation, we redecked the front porch of the William Fulton House. We installed, as you saw in the picture, a new storage facility for our framed artifacts, and we converted all of our ceiling lighting to rheostat-controlled LEDs in our conference room. There were a lot of others too, but these are some highlights of things that we did, and we got a little bit of recognition. The museum ended up 40 times in local and area news media publications. We were also featured, and this doesn't happen very often, in Kansas Magazine in a three-page spread, and we got to celebrate our own 75th anniversary. We did that with a series of events. And I just want to share a few comments from our guestbook. Our guestbook had 99 pages of comments, and a few of those were, "Awesome place, great memories, worth the drive, excellent museum, reliving my childhood, excellent displays, educational place, happy we came, thanks for documenting history, great memories," and it goes on and on. One of my favorites was, "Thank you for keeping our past alive." So that's what we did with the resources that we received last year. If you go to those yellow pages, you do remember yellow pages, but we, you might want to know, what are we doing now in 2024? Well, we again are conducting more than a dozen free noon and evening history programs for the public. We just brought in Mark Twain, reenactor, who spoke this past Saturday evening in our Evening in the Past program. We'll be hosting a dedication of the restored and preserved Mitchell Runnels grave site at Valley View Cemetery. That's the engine grave that we were able to refurbish, so it, it won't be in danger of falling down any further. We're enhancing our walking tours of Valley View Cemetery with new voice projection units for each of the reenactors. We've instituted a revised Fannie County Pioneer Awards program, and that happened on the 50th anniversary of that program. It dates back to 1974. And in October, we're excited because we'll have Doug Adams here. Doug is writing a book. He is the great-great-grandson of Buffalo Jones, and he's been here several times, and he'll be back to speak about, about his project. In museum exhibits, we've just opened that temporary display honoring the life and the story of Sergeant Gregory Knoll. We'll have another four short-term exhibits in the front door gallery. We're still advancing toward digitizing all of our Fannie County veteran biographies and photographs, and that will become a new exhibit when that's complete. We'll soon be changing topics and artifacts in the little display right out here in this lobby. We try to do that each year, and we're adding a couple, we hope, of new artifacts in the true crime exhibit. One of those is already here, and we're working with the Kansas State Historical Society to obtain the other. In preservation of artifacts and facilities, we talked about the roof. With Fennep Foundation assistance, we're replacing about 1,200 square feet now of ceiling tiles because they're stained, there's a danger of mold, which is the last thing you want in a museum, so that's coming up. Also with assistance from that foundation, we're replacing staff computers this year. There are eight of those units. They date to 2015. They're at the point where you kind of whack the monitor on the side, hoping, okay, maybe this will make things work better. We are revising our sales and inventory management system in our gift shop. We're improving photographic records of all the incoming artifacts that we receive, and we're continuing to convert all of our pre-1998 paper records on our artifact collection to digital format. And again, that's just a few highlights of what we will be doing this year or already doing. So you might ask what's coming up next. Well, our summer exhibit hours will start on May 28th. That'll expand public access to the exhibits from 28 hours over seven days of the week to 46 hours over seven days of the week. We're about to top a total of 200, or of 25,000 historic artifacts and photographs and records in our collection. We started the year with about 24,580 items, and it continues to grow. That also includes 1,833 cubic feet of early-day Fannie County records, which we're maintaining in our archive area. The 1884 William and Letty Fulton House will be opening for summer tours on the 1st of June, and the big enchilada on our combination plate of Vance and. And the big enchilada on our combination plate of events and activities is the Flea Market Festival, and that is coming up on the thirteenth of July. We think we'll have about forty visiting vendors and a crowd, we're estimating at this point, probably thirty-eight hundred people. All of this is possible due to the work of our staff. There are six, some are part-time, some are full-time. Sixty-nine volunteers, some who help us routinely, some who help us occasionally. Forty-four community sponsors of our programs and activities. One hundred and seven contributors, people who believe enough in what we do that they provide funds to help us carry out our work. And also the support of this commission. And I would say that support is our most significant source of resources, and we know it's more than just a drop in the bucket. So, thank you.
Almost consumed all of our allotted time for any questions. So commissioners?
Not a question, but a comment. I attended your Bensford History Update, that was quite interesting, but Mr. Chairman, I move we take it under advisement.
Hold on a second. Questions or comments to Steve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, I'll take the budget request under advisement.
Thank you so much.
He's confident, it's a little lacking. Give you two.
Unless you need the bucket, I'll take it.
Good luck.
If you can find an air conditioner in exchange, let me know. We will next hear from the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Please announce yourself for the viewing public.
Absolutely. My name is Don Dionisio, I go by Don, it's a little easier. I have no bucket, but I'm here with the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center, and we do appreciate your folks' time, and we do appreciate your support. Just to kind of recap what our agency does and what we do out here in Finy County, we are the agency that is the first response after a report of child abuse has been made. We work very closely with Susan and her team, with the county attorney, to essentially set up that first interview, that first response, right after the report has been made. We're kind of been at for a little while now. We're in a world right now where children are told not to talk to law enforcement. So that's why, partly why our agency is so important. Unfortunately, that's what they're told, that's, you're not, you don't speak to law enforcement. We're not that. We are the agency dedicated to assisting these children and seeing kind of what's going on at home, kind of get a better idea, get a better insight of what's going on. So essentially, interview is done there at our facility here in Garden, down the street here, with one of our interviewers. Very well-trained, very kind individual, first and foremost as well too. While the interview is being conducted, other agencies are involved as well too, Department of Children and Family, law enforcement, any other agencies that are tasked with the safety of that child as well too are present. The goal essentially is one interview. We do the best we can to kind of do that for the biggest reason of, we don't want that child essentially to be re-traumatized. We don't want, we don't want them to kind of keep carrying this, if that makes any sense. And also, we don't want them to be upset about coming forward. Nation, national statistics right now are telling us about ninety percent of children that have been victim of some sort of child abuse, ninety percent of those children know that individual. They have some sort of relationship with that individual, the family has some sort of relationship with that individual. Our agency in our thirty-four counties, we're sitting at about ninety-seven percent. So that's why, you know, these children care about this individual in some way, shape, or form. So it's very important for them to understand, you did nothing wrong, we're here to service you, we're here to do the best we can to take care of the trauma that fortunately you've had to endure. We also do assign an advocate to our family as well too, to kind of help assist with things, court advocacy, things like that as well too, making appointment dates, things like that, or getting to appointment dates sometimes too, needed unfortunately, or sometimes it could be something as easy as the county attorney reaches out to us, hey, we're having some struggles reaching, getting ahold of these families, would you mind being that, essentially be us reaching out, whether it be a home visitor or whether it just be a phone call. So we're able to kind of help with that as well too. Most importantly too, we're able to stay with that child regardless of what the outcome is of court, to provide mental health services for these children, provide that therapy, provide that solid groundwork for positive, positive choices in life, things like that. Statistics are also kind of showing us as well too, folks that have been arrested for any sort of substance abuse, that kind of thing, they report that they have been abused as a child. So it's very important that, you know, of those eighty, eighty-plus percent, how many of those could have been prevented if, had we had some mental health services in the very beginning, when the report, when the report of abuse was there? So yeah, we're, that's kind of what we're able to, what we're able to do out here. With your folks' help, actually in Finy County here this last year, we were able to provide one thousand nine hundred and forty therapy sessions to one hundred and twenty-six children here in Finy County. We were also able, we also performed one hundred and forty-four forensic interviews, two hundred and sixty-four, provided services to two hundred and sixty-four children, total of two thousand sixty-seven services. We also assisted with court advocacy seventy-one times and attended court eighty-five times out here in this area. And let me tell you, it would be very difficult without the support of you folks here, and we do greatly appreciate that.
Questions from the commissioners?
What age bracket of children are we talking about?
So age bracket, one, one to six-year-old, about twenty-three percent. The majority of our children are seven to twelve, so forty-two percent. Sorry, I'll slow down here. Thirteen to seventeen percent are thirty-three percent. And then eighteen plus is at, sitting at about two percent. And that could be, we are requested sometimes by law enforcement in the event that there's an adult that is part of that case, we do, they sometimes do request that we do that interview, and we're happy to do that, to assist them with that too. I know the caseload for these, for law enforcement sometimes gets, gets a little, it gets, it gets high, so we're able to kind of at least facilitate that and see these children, kind of go from there.
Sir, looking at your financials. It appears, you know, you carry pretty good cash balance at the end of the year, you know, last several years. Nowhere in the interest earned column is there any interest earned. You don't collect any interest on your idle funds?
For that, I'd have to, I'd have to double-check on that for sure.
It's not listed in the financials, so.
Yeah, we'd have to get back to you on that for sure, on that.
I would encourage you with those type of balances to check with our county treasurer. She could probably help you invest your funds and keep it all in the legal side.
Absolutely. Would, yeah, appreciate that.
Also, how many counties do you serve?
Thirty-four. Everything along the Colorado border, about midway up the Nebraska border, Morton, Stanton, and Seward, if I remember correctly, along the bottom there.
Okay.
We, fortunately, we stay pretty busy, but we're here for the children of the community, so.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Otherwise, motion?
I'll offer a motion to take their budget request under advisement.
Second. We've been seconded to take this outside agency budget advisement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
We'll now take up the twenty twenty-five budget request for Russell Child.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners and administrative support team. Nice to see you all. My name's Rebecca Clancy, I'm the chief executive officer for Russell Child Development Center. This morning, I have Stephanie Wills with me, who is our early intervention program director. And we also brought along one of our team members from our early intervention program, Remy Clark, and she's going to share a little bit about her services she provides here as a speech-language pathologist. I believe you all are familiar with our services. We're here today to make a request for our early intervention program, which is the Part C service. We have a contract with KDHE to provide this service in thirteen southwest Kansas counties. This service is for children from the time they are born until their third birthday. It is federally mandated that we provide this service to all children that qualify with an identified disability or delay. We cannot have a waiting list, and all services are free of charge to the families. Stephanie's team has forty-five calendar days to get in there and assess a child once they are referred to us, so we work very hard at meeting all our state mandates. In twenty twenty-three, we provided this service to five hundred and ninety-nine children, with two hundred and ninety-eight of those children residing in Finy County. So as you can see, almost half of the children we provide this service to do live in Finy County. We have eighteen direct service providers that are assigned to Finy County and work here regularly, providing this support service. And I'm going to let Stephanie tell you a little bit more about the details of the work provided.
Did each one of you get a packet that has this information on it? Do you have that? Okay, perfect. As Rebecca explained, our services, our Part C special education for children, birth age three, to qualify for our services, they have to have a delay or a disability. When we do an evaluation, we do a play-based evaluation, and a child has to show twenty-five percent delay in one area of development, or twenty percent delay in two areas of development to qualify for our program. We do partner with Part B, which is the school district here, Garfield Early Childhood Center. So when a child turns three, we transition a child to the early childhood center, and we work really hard to make that transition really seamless for families. We invite Melanie Garrison, who is the director of that program, on visits with us, and we invite her to see the family and enjoy the, and get to meet them and have that opportunity. On the second page of this handout, you'll see a picture of all the providers that we have here in Finy County. On our staff, we have early childhood special ed teachers, we have speech-language pathologists, we have social workers, we have nurses, we have occupational therapists, we have family support service providers, and we have bilingual professionals. And we also contract with the Cellacare in Angela to provide our PT services here in Finy County. As Rebecca mentioned, that this last year, we provided two hundred and ninety-eight services to families here in Finy County, and one of our providers was Remy Clark, who was a speech-language pathologist. And I just wanted her to share a little bit about what we provide with our families and how we can support them and with other partners in our community.
Hello. I'm Remy. I've had the privilege of working with Russell for the last three years, and I love my job, everyone will know that. I plan on staying a long time. And so in addition to educating parents on their child's speech and language development and giving them strategies on how they can help support that and foster that growth, I also do what's called family service coordination, which is just helping families access resources in the community. And honestly, that's a very rewarding part of my job, is just helping families thrive because we know that if the parents are doing well, they're going to help provide for their children better and provide with their emotional development. And so a recent story is I have a family here in Garden City who recently moved here, and we quickly realized they had pretty limited resources. As part of our evaluation, we do ask about what they're receiving and how we can help provide some additional support. And with this family in particular, their, their children needed help getting health insurance, and they also didn't have any form of transportation. And so we helped them fill out applications to get their children eligible for Medicaid, and then we also realized that it would be really great if we could, could get them to go to a play group and connect with other parents and help their children meet some other children and just get out in the community. And so due to some funding that we had, we were able to get this family a double stroller so that they could walk them, walk their children to the closest learn and play and just connect. They met some families that they could connect with, and their children got to play with some other kids, and it was just a really great experience. Mom just kept telling me how grateful she was and kept giving me hugs, so that was really sweet. And then when we walked back to their house, she was so proud of the stroller, she was showing it off to one of their neighbors, and I think that their neighbors want to go to learn and play now too. So I hope that's kind of a story of, you know, how your funds are being used, and we're just grateful for how it's impacting the community.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions about what we're serving here in Finy County? And then I'll let Rebecca go on with the budget.
Go ahead and conclude.
Okay. Our request to you is listed on page five in the spreadsheet there. And we are asking based on population and number served for a hundred and seventy-five five hundred. And we do appreciate the one twelve five hundred that we received last year. We are good stewards of our funding and work with integrity, very committed to providing quality services to the families we serve. A breakdown of our budget is on, our preliminary budget is on page four, and you can see at the top there, when we're fully staffed, what it costs for us to pay for our highly-qualified staff that are, are out here working very hard with the, the families here in Finy County. You can also see what we are anticipating with Medicaid reimbursement. And we've had seventy-five children fall off of that process during the unwinding process that Medicaid has gone through. So our staff, as Remy mentioned, have been working very hard to get families back on Medicaid that qualify. We did find out that the legislature did approve another two million dollars for Part C services statewide. There are twenty-nine service providers providing the service in the state of Kansas, so all hundred and five counties are covered. Very recently, we learned we would receive an additional seventy-five thousand dollars. So that makes our number in red there look not quite so tough. We're going to show a funding gap of about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand six thirty, which I also like to point out at the bottom of page four. Our funding gap is quite a bit less than it was the year before. So we do have a gap, but the gap is smaller, and we are grateful for that. We continue to work hard to secure additional funding streams and grants and tap into all the things that we can and that we're eligible for to make things work. And we have consistently been able to provide this service for many years and are very proud that we are selected by KDHE to provide this service. I would stand for questions, or Stephanie, or Remy, if you have any.
Commissioners?
I have a question. Your one hundred and twelve thousand that was allotted the present year is about fifty-six percent less than what you're requesting for next year. You're one of the higher requesters standing before us, so we obviously don't have the funds to raise everybody fifty-six percent, so some adjustment may be necessary. It's just being pretty straightforward with you.
Well, and I appreciate that. And, and as we too try to be very transparent and straightforward by showing historically what we've asked for with all thirteen counties and, and our county commissioners that we work with, and so the amount that we're asking for is the same as we asked going back to twenty twenty-three? Yes? Yes?
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, commissioners? Hearing none, then a motion, Commissioner Jones?
I move that we take this budget under advisement.
Second.
We've been seconded to take the budget request for Russell Child Development Services, RCDC, under advisement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. All right, we are going to take a break, and we will reconvene at ten o'clock straight up. We'll be in recess. We'll be in recess. Our agenda is to hear from Southwest Developmental Services, sir.
Good morning.
Who are you?
I am Mark Heim, President and CEO of SDSI, Southwest Developmental Services, Inc. I hadn't gotten to that yet, but I was going to.
Good, tell me about the school board, too. A high-paying job.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I was still waiting for that check.
Sorry for the segue, but good morning, Mark, and what do you have for us to...
Oh, I'm, you have the packet, I'm sure. I'll just start out on page one. And this is the same information we provided to y'all for a number of years. Now, there's, of course, some slight variances on the number of folks that we serve and so on. But page one, just who we are. We're the Community Developmental Disability Organization. We serve 18 counties, 13 here in the southwest corner, five counties around the Great Bend area, Barton, Pawnee, Rice, Russian, Stafford Counties. When we put this packet together, which was in March, we had 1,091 individuals in our service system. What we request county funds for and what we use state aid for, you can see that local finance plan we used in '23, $528,092 of county funds. And then we used $327,062 of state aid. And that's the entire state aid we get from the state. It's discretionary funding. Our budget, you can see at the bottom there what we get for CDDO administration. And then we use some of the county funds to supplement that budget. Page two, a number of years ago, y'all asked for any statute with any outside organization and how that pertained to the relationship between the county and the outside organization. So page two is that statute. Fannie County could provide this service on their own, or they can contract with an organization such as SDSI. And you've done that for a number of years now. Page three is the request, and they're all 18 counties that we serve. That information is there, Fannie County. You can see for CDDO admin, $15,039, the request on the population. I do want to point out the very bottom figure there, the $718,500, that has not changed for years. So we've stayed with that. So the total request in the population is 188,679, a total request of 203,718. And on the far right-hand side, you can see the numbers, the request for '24, and then what we receive from those counties. And just to let you know upfront, we work with what we get, okay? So whatever we get from the counties, we'll work with that. I'm not trying to lessen, don't take that as we're okay with going down, but we work with it. Page four is what we use that local finance plan money for. And you can see the county, again, the county mail and the state aid we get. In '23, the actual numbers are there. The big item we use it for in that local finance plan is transportation. What we have budgeted in '24, the same thing. We might change a little bit, and I'll go into that just a little bit here in a moment. On transportation, we may slight, may adjust that slightly and maybe more than slightly, I'm not sure. But anyway, page five is the Community Developmental Disability Organization, service providers that we have. The very top part is the direct care and/or case management service providers, the city in which their office is located. And then we have the other services below, and then the financial management services. Page six is information that has been provided for a number of years to y'all. And the big thing on this that has changed again is at the top, 1,091 individuals in our 18 counties. Approximately 567 receive residential, day or in-home supports. 467 receive case management only. The rest of that information, really, unless you want me to go through it, I'm going to just go to the next page. But that's what we do. Page seven, we provided because we have HUDHousing. We, SDSI was a sponsor for HUDH corporations that were built somewhere around the mid-'80s into the mid-'90s. Well, we still have those. So we have seven group homes here. We have a number of apartment settings here. So that, that, those properties are maintained by local, we use local contractors. We use local, we buy refrigerators, washers, dryers, and we do go through washers, dryers much more often than the typical family does because these are, according to the contract with HUDH, we have to have these there. So they're there, and we buy them local. Page eight is an organizational chart, Board of Directors. You may know the Fannie County representative. Mr. Zach Schultz is our rep from Fannie County. I'm the President and CEO through July 12th. I'm retiring. And Steve Sandvold behind me here will be taking over July 15th. So this will be my last time in front of you for this. I may be here again for something else, but for this, this will be it. We have, in the meantime, Steve has taken that position. Andrea Jacobs has been hired, and in our Great Bend office, has been hired to take his position, and then we filled her position. So I feel comfortable that, at this point in time, I'm the only extra one right now. Everybody else is in place, getting training for the position that they've taken, the new position, and we'll transition come July. On pages nine, we have from 2013 through 2023, the applications that we've received those years, the persons we've determined eligible, ineligible, and so on. The bottom two-thirds of the page is the waitlist. The waitlist across the state of Kansas, when this was put together, and with the latest information we have from KDADs, on February 13th, 2024, we had 5,240 individuals waiting.
How did the legislature do on reducing that? I heard from different legislators about that number legislatively mandated. Could you help us out a little bit?
Yes, I can. And I was, and I'm going to do that, give me just one moment to finish here. We have 356 of those individuals in our service area when we put this together. The oldest one's January 24th of 2013. What the legislature did is they appropriated enough funding to take 500 people off this waitlist statewide. We are looking at, depending upon the stop date, we're looking at in our area, in our area, again, being 18 counties, from anywhere from 50 to around 60 people coming off that waitlist.
That's it?
Yep.
Out of 356?
Yes. The waitlist is developed on the fact that, okay, you're determined eligible first, and then you want services. So you sign the piece of paper that you want services, you go on the waitlist. That waitlist is a little bit over 10 and a half years right now, as you can see. They may go, what the state's doing right now, and this is going to be a heavy lift for all the providers, all the CDOs across the state, because when you take, we've never had in my, I've been with SDSI almost 33 years. We've never taken 500 people off a waitlist before. I mean, we're going to have to go out and do functional assessment because we work, they get a letter from the state that they've been offered services. They can decline or accept. And what the state's telling us, the latest information, about 75% of the individuals will accept services, about 25% decline. That has gone up over the years because of the length of the waitlist that folks decide, yeah, I better do this. But it's a personal decision. I mean, when you get on a waitlist over 10 years out, your life may change a lot in 10 years. So that's their choice. With that letter, then we contact these individuals. We've already started this process. We've contacted, we went out over 50 people on our waitlist to contact them, to let them know this was coming. What services are you looking for? If you accept them and so on. So we're being proactive rather than reactive and waiting for this. But then we also have the problem, as everybody, I believe, here in Fannie County and other places across the state and nation, in finding workers, people to employ to do this job. Our providers are in that same boat. And one thing I was talking about earlier about the local finance plan, you use some county money. We may divert some money, we've talked about it, for a six-month period to incentivize our providers to take new people because several of our providers are capped. They're saying, okay, we'll take 50 people, and then that's it. We're done right now. If they do that, they cannot participate in the local finance plan, so they don't get any funding from it. But we're looking at trying to incentivize that for a six-month. We can't do it forever, but thinking maybe a six-month period. SDSI may have some reserves that we could put into that. Although the board is, we've not got to talk with our board yet about that. So does that answer?
Thank you. Please continue. I'm sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, that's no problem. It's just, it's a, it's going to be a heavy lift across the state because we're not the only ones in this boat, looking at providers that can't hire people that want to do the job. So it'll be interesting, and hopefully, we can do it. And that's one reason we really want to make sure that we can get it done and get these folks into services. I mean, they've waited 10 years, some of them more than that. So we'd sure like to see them find a service provider. Page 10 is where we got those numbers from. This was off the KDADs website. 8,992 individuals were receiving services as of March 12th, 2024. 5,279 folks were on the waitlist. And the numbers down below, we added those because those were from last year. You can see the count as of March 14th, '23, was 9,043. So we've actually decreased by a little bit the number of folks in services, but the waitlist has increased quite a bit. The legislature did explore trying to go more than 500, going up to 1,000, but that, it didn't, it didn't see the light of day. It just didn't happen.
You mentioned capital carryover, 1.8 billion.
Yeah.
The 500 that you did give, is there a fiscal note attached to that which you were aware of?
I have not seen it, but what I know Dr. Clifford said at the legislative coffee, what they were told is it was about $53,000 per person on an average. And that's an average, when you're taking somebody off that waitlist. So 500 times that, I think it's a little bit over 20, I don't remember now, but it...
2.5 million.
Yeah.
We got 1.8 billion in excess reserves.
Yeah.
Just to know what the priority is.
Yeah. Yeah, and I saw there, she's, of course, we knew it was going to happen. She's going to call, she said today she's calling a special session. We'll see when that happens. No date yet, but we'll see what happens. My understanding of that special session, they can bring up anything they want, not just what they're right there for, but they can do anything they want if they, you know, if they can, anything that's been vetoed, and they choose to, and they believe they can get it by, then they'll do that.
I think we have a budget, and I think that we will have a very short period of time when we get back together.
Yep.
That's my hope.
Yep.
We'll see. Continue, please.
Okay, thank you. Page 11 is just a map of the state of Kansas, the 27 CDDOs. As you can see, in the gray, and number 21, we got the 13 counties, as I said previously, in the southwest corner, and five counties are in central Kansas. Page 12 is our Board of Directors. And again, Zach Schultz is our Fannie County representative. And we have several positions that are vacant. And it's hard to find folks that are willing to serve, too. Although with our board, you don't do any fundraising. You come to meetings. We meet once a quarter. We pay mileage. There are important decisions that are made there, but it's still hard to find folks that will serve. But we're working on it.
Where do you have your board meetings?
Here. Here, yeah, here at the Garden City office. But we also have a Zoom option. So if they cannot make it or choose not to, they can, we have Zoom. And it's, it's nice equipment that, hey, back in 2020, we ended up going to it. We had to purchase stuff in our conference room to be able to do a Zoom meeting. And it's worked out well. It's a good enough equipment. You can have a meeting with 20-some folks there and then have a bunch of people on the Zoom call as well. There's one other thing I want to point out that's in the paperwork that we filled out for Fannie County. We have worked with USD 457. Tracy Schellenberger is on the board as well, the SDSI board. And she, she's retiring, but she, her, Kansas Workforce One, Kansas Vocational Rehabilitation, and the University of Kansas Center for Developmental Disabilities has worked together now for a little bit over two years. And they've done two job, reverse job fairs. They're also working on other things. The one thing we're finding with this waitlist that we have is that when a, when a child graduates from high school, they go home. What do they do then? Well, if they're employable, we want to see them employed in the community. And right now, with the workforce the way it is, there's a lot of, a lot of businesses out there that need somebody. So we're working with them, and they will, we will continue to work with them going forward. Those two reverse job fairs, I don't remember what the numbers were for the last one that we just had in March, but several individuals were offered jobs. And so they're working in the community. And, you know, it may not be a lot of hours. It may not be a 48 hours a week, but they're getting out in the community, which is what we want to see with individuals, just being a part of the community. What we have here is called HCBS Home Community-Based Service Waiver. Community is a big part of that that we want to see, and then being a part of the community.
Well, we're about out of time. Is there something I should make? Or can I start asking questions?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, the last paragraph of the Fannie County questionnaire has, you list everybody here in Garden City that you have housed, and in particularly, in particular, Mark, what is the state farm marshal, uh, requiring of new regulations on your housing projects here in Fannie County?
We-
Is there any way we can help?
I don't know, but I'll, I'll start. We have, most every group home we have is a seven bedroom group home. We have one that's a six bedroom group home. What has happened, Johnson County actually filed lawsuit against the farm marshal, state farm marshal. Rick Yoxel, our attorney down in Liberal, has visited with them, and we're in the process of trying to get that on board with their, uh, lawsuit. But essentially what they're doing, they're limiting it to four people. They're, and I, I don't have the regulation or anything in front of me, but they won't let us house six or seven people in the, in those, in those homes. They're limiting it to four. So in our mind, in Johnson County as well, the attorney up there, the attorneys up there that have filed this lawsuit, they're discriminating against individuals with intellectual development disabilities. They don't do this with anybody else. Uh, case eight, you know, people living in a house, I, I know, I mean, I had people, sons, daughters that went there. I know there's more than seven people in some of those houses that they do, and they're not requiring the same things there they are with this. Now, I do understand that, you know, we're working with a community and, and citizens that do have some capacity issues, some cognitive issues, but you also have staff there. So I, I don't, I don't know how to answer the que, I don't know the answer to the question, but we're, we're doing our best here to, to move this thing forward.
I just, I don't understand, and I'm flabbergasted that we have two different standards.
Yeah, and, and HUD properties, they'll do enough, you know, it's, they'll allow you enough to essentially break even. And that's when you're usually at, you know, a seven bedroom home. If we can have that at six, we're doing pretty good. If we have a seven, we're doing, we're doing well, but we're not making money. I mean, they're just going to allow you to make money. So when we're at four, that creates a real problem. At some point in time, I'm not, it's not going to fall on me, but the other folks may have to look at this and say, we got to do something different, and we'll give the keys back to HUD, and they can do what they want with them.
All right. Other questions from commissioners? I've taken up too much of Mark's time.
No, I'm fine.
Just a quick, the folks on the waitlist, they just on their own?
They can have case management services, but that's not a direct service. So yeah, essentially they are. That case management service can help them, hey, um, with whatever they might need as far as if they, you know, Steve, help me out on this one.
Well, case management's the resource, uh, just about, sorry.
Please announce yourself.
Uh, my name is Steve Sandvold. I'll be, um, I'm the incoming President, CEO for, for SDSI, but, um, the question was about, uh, case, or what, what are folks doing if they don't have services? And so some of these folks, I mean, hopefully they're with their families and they're, um, they're somewhat busy or doing, doing things, but that was why we felt it was important to help folks get employed in the community, because sometimes they just sit there. And their skills and their abilities, if you're just sitting there, they decrease. So that's the important part there. But, um, there are folks that get involved, they volunteer, they, they, they're in your community, they do the things that, that they, you know, they like, but, um, it sure would be, it's, it's not the same without services, so.
Any other questions?
I have a question for you.
Go.
Mark, would you, for the benefit of our viewing audience, cover this question? I have two questions.
Yes.
Number one, when you get your monies, you pay for administration, and then all the rest of that money essentially goes out to support other providers. Does it-
Yes.
Can you name a kind of a handful of the providers here in the local area that you, it's in your notes here?
Right. We have Mosaic, uh, here in Garden City. We have them also in Liberal. Um, we have Destiny Supports here. We have Rest Care here. Uh, and I don't want to leave anybody out. Steve, Charis, uh, is here. And Charis has actually expanded a little bit. Uh, they've expanded two locations for day services. We have some case managers that are local here, that, that's what they do, and that's all they do.
My reason for asking that, so the viewing public would know you're kind of the go-to shop to support a number of-
Yes.
-of other entities.
And the, the one thing on the transportation, Medicaid does not pay transportation on their reimbursement fees.
That's my second question. You're reading my mind. What, what are the transportation issues? Who are you hauling where?
We don't require a bunch of information from them. What we're trying to do is make sure we get some money out to help them, but they're taking folks to and from medical service appointments. They're taking them to and from, uh, shopping excursions. They're taking them to and from day sites where the day, day services are provided. They'll be taking them to and from just, just recreational events and things like that. Things you and I take for granted because we can go get in our car and go.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mark, uh, one question, you were talking about transportation, you know, the transit does, the public transit does a lot of that if you call and request it.
All right. Some of it, um, I know we have one individual that is employed up at the Ice House, but he gets off, I think later, well, I know he does, later in the evening, so he's not able to access that. And I think that in some cases they are accessing it, but I'm not sure to what extent.
I would sure encourage you to call them and talk to them, because I know they're trying to recruit more passengers here.
Okay. Okay. And we will definitely pass that along to our providers to let them know that too. We have a meeting with them on, on June 4th, so.
Can you draw this to a close? Do we have any final questions? Otherwise, motion?
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the SDSI budget under advisement.
I'll second.
I'm moving second to take this budget request under advisement. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mark.
Thank you.
Well, next on our agenda is to hear from the Fannie County Conservation District on their 2025 budget request. Please announce.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carmen Rhodes with the Fannie County Conservation District. I also have with me Abe Lawler, who is our, our new, um, Chairman of the Board, and Casey Robinson with NRCS. So as we proceed, if you have any questions, they might be able to answer those. Um, quickly, what we did in 2023, 2023 was a totally, ended on a different note, and 2024 started the same way. Um, new challenges were brought to the table. Um, decrease in workforce in the, in the building puts a lot more demand on the ones that are there. Office coverage is difficult. Um, that's the one side of it. Then we've got the program side of it and the projects that we want to do and why we're here. We are here to promote, provide technical, financial, and educational services to the constituents of Fannie County. Um, if you, so our request is, is just, uh, running the same request we've had for the last several years, um, $35,000. Um, one thing I want to, we've talked before about the matching funds that we get from the state. And the matching funds from the state in the past have always been the 25,000 up to 25,000. Um, I believe we are in the process, if, as long as the governor passes it, of rewriting that to where it'll be one to two. So for every $1 from you, $2 from the state up to 50,000, which will be nice, because then we can really look at hiring a second body to, in our, in our office. Um, if you take a look, if we go, oh, probably to the last page I provided. Yeah, one more page. Um, one thing I want you to take note is some of the programs that we are a part of, and there's quite a few of them, and I know a few of you are very familiar with these programs. Um, where the programs that we are a part of aren't just local and state, but they're part of the federal as well. And as you know, federal has brought down lots of money for us to push through our counties, and we want to keep as much in Fannie County as we can. Um, for 2023, we did not see a lot of that yet. We will definitely be seeing it, especially on the state and local side of it. Um, under our water resources program, we had 34,000 allocated for, um, most of that went to a lot of your irrigation practices, your terraces, your diversions. Um, irrigation technology is a big thing right now, and that is very important when we're looking at water quality as well as water quantity. Um, that's promoting those changes into your irrigation processes. So we're making sure every drop is counting towards our crops. Um, we, I was on the ball and made sure we had 40,000 allocated to Fannie County. Out of 300,000, I believe, Make sure I got my numbers right here. Next year, we are expecting $2 million for the entire state. So I want to get my hands on as much of that to help these farmers change. It's expensive to change your irrigation practices. Um, and, and when your livelihood depends on the yield of your crop, you know, you want to make sure that you're, we don't have rain. So what are we going to do? Um, the other thing I want you to take note of is some of our federal programs. The CSP program, 6.3 million for 2023. That will more than likely go up, as well as, um, it's important to note that of all the CSP contracts in the state of Kansas, there's three counties here in southwest Kansas, including Fannie, that hold a majority of those contracts. Um, I had all these notes, but my weekend was crazy, so.
It was fun.
It was fun. It was graduation, so it was great.
Good.
Um, so it's important, it's important to see that bottom line there. For every dollar that's invested from 2023, you received $241 a return on that. I expect that definitely to increase if I can get a second person in my office to kind of help with that when I'm out on educational days, or they're out on educational days. We still have someone in the office to help with those applications and those questions. The other thing I want you to know is that, um, through the state, we are doing a lot of grants, a lot of partnerships to provide additional resources to residents of Kansas, including Fannie County, including, um, carbon credits. Don't ask me the science behind them, but there are programs out there that they can be paid. They can earn a little extra money on, on their crops.
All right. Is that-
That, that concludes my, yep.
All right. Questions from the commissioners?
Not a question as much. I'm going to have a question, but a comment. I remember earlier in my career on this board, we unfunded your, uh, your agency's request, another person standing where you're standing, and on budget, uh, uh, the, the day that we were going to have a budget hearing, we had a handful of farmers or more than a handful in here saying, hey, wait a minute, we need that office to get in and get our federal programs and so on. Also a thing called maintenance of effort, you would not get the then $24,000-
Right.
-in the state. So, so funding you is a little bit important to our farm community.
Very.
But I still ask Carmen every year, do we need 105 conservation districts in 105 counties? And I cannot understand why, when, I'll bet 70% or more of the farmers in Kearney County are in Garden City at least once a week. Why, why can't a couple of them go together? And she's going to-
Well, I think, I think we both can chime in on this. One is, um, I will, I will continue to say, yes, we do still need that local representation. Um, what is important to a farmer here in Fannie is not important as, is not the same as what's happening in Kearney. You know, our needs, we, across Fannie County, the soil, the drought, um, all of that changes across Fannie County. We are a huge county, and I don't think we're going to have someone who's from the gray side of Fannie County wanting to travel to Kearney to take care of their, they have, they pick and choose when they want to come into Fannie County, when they're in Fannie County. Do you get what I'm saying? The travel to try and go to another county to take care of their paperwork. When you're looking at a Kearney County farmer, yeah, they're probably in Garden quite frequently, but that's not to say that Fannie is going to be the office that stays open.
We heard, we heard that reasoning on extension services.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's working very well to put two counties together and, and still, I guess we can respectfully disagree and not leave here mad at each other, but I still don't understand.
Well, I will say that when that defunding, um, came about was when I started. So I kind of got thrown into, to that and seeing how that worked. But I think Casey can definitely speak because she covers three counties and-
Yeah, excellent.
I'll, I'll let her.
Please announce who you are.
I'm Casey Robinson, and I'm the Supervisory District Conservationist for the, I'm, my head office is, uh, in Garden City, but I cover Kearney, Scott, and Fannie Counties.
How's it work?
Um, awful right now. That's why I'm saying I, we need these conservation districts in every office. And that's why I'm saying the workload that we are being forced down upon, I mean, the dollars we are getting on the federal side and are increasing from now until 2031 is what I believe we've been passed through with this Inflation Reduction Act money. It's very important to have the conservation districts in every office.
Okay.
They are helping us tremendously, and we have done several studies on the federal side of trying to combine offices. And we do have a couple offices that are combined, Gove, and they are combined with, um, Oakley, I guess Logan County now. And we have regretted it every day. They still have a conservation district located in Gove County without, and they have an FSA office, but not an NRCS present. And I know it is very difficult for them to manage that as well. I think it's very important we, I mean, hold them, like you said, we do share, I mean, the same, a lot of the same, but there are different. I mean, water quality, I know we have water quality issues here, but I think it is worse in Kearney County, just because they are closer to Colorado and what is coming across if there are water quality issues. I mean, we still have them here, but to have the local presence in the office and help us promote the federal programs, this numbers that you receive, we're on our lower end of our, because our CSP contracts are five-year contracts. We are, in our rotation of where we are at, we're kind of on our lower side of numbers. The next couple of years are when we start ramping up our traditional cycle of numbers on those contracts. And as of right now, I have one other staff in Scott County, so it's me and him covering all three counties at this time, so.
All right. Thanks for your, uh, your enthusiastic response.
Dave, Dave, you answered your own question on why there's 105 of them, because it's a federal program. USD is federal, not state. So, and I will further expand that I'm, see these ladies quite often, uh, as a, as a farmer. Just about every time I move, we're on the other side of the building, almost seem to slip over to your side of the building too, so.
Yep.
But you cannot go to their office anymore and rent a, a drill for alfalfa seed. They don't have one.
If, 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 if I get enough funding, I can buy one.
Not this year.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
I have to call the governor.
Abe, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Sorry?
I'm Abe Lawler. I'm Abe Lawler. I'm the Chair for the Fannie County Conservation District, and thanks for letting us present today. Um, we've gotten a lot of interest here recently across our board on the water quality and quantity issues, and this funding is going to further support our efforts to provide, uh, these producers more options and funding for better water quantity, quality and quantity savings. So just wanted to throw that out there. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I move we take Conservation District under advisement.
Ice Chairman gets to go first, Mr.-
He did, didn't he? Second.
I'm moving second to take the budget request under advisement for the district. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. We'll get back-
Farmer yields to the rancher.
Sounds like turf war.
We're not getting in the middle of that one.
Larry moved and Dwayne seconded. Another tree got chopped down. Here comes.
I have one. Yeah, I don't need another one. Thank you, Chair. Next, we'll hear from Lisa Southern from Compass Behavioral Health.
Good morning. Lisa Southern with Compass Behavioral Health.
Who do you have with you today?
Fernando Rodriguez, and I'm the Garden City Office Director.
Just like everyone else, it's tough to cram everything that happens in a year or happens in a day at your agency in fifteen minutes. Going to turn you to some highlights. We won't be able to go through everything in here. I would so appreciate, though, if you could take time because there are some great success stories of some programming that we've enhanced that has really been helpful to people. So we have had what Commissioner Schultz, who is on our board, said in one meeting, an explosion at Compass. So I did include that in here. As of this morning, we have three hundred and fifteen employees. Now, we always have about a dozen more for the summer program, but this time last year we had about two twenty. So we have really increased the number of people. With that, however, we did not anticipate that you cannot put three hundred people in buildings designed for two hundred people. So we are looking at some building space here in Garden City and also looking at doing in addition to our Dodge City outpatient building. That's where we see the largest growth is Garden City and Dodge City are two largest areas. With this, we have had a forty-five point three seven percent budget increase. Our budget is now twenty-three million dollars for 2024. We've had an increase of eight percent in the number of people served over the previous year. Eleven percent when you look back another year over that. We continue to work really hard at building infrastructure to keep people local and get treatment from us and not need to go to hospitals. As we said last year, we do not have an adult or a child psychiatric unit here, so we have to send people to Salina, Topeka, Kansas City for treatment, and that's a very big burden on them. We've also been spending a lot of our resources on getting people to these treatment centers because they don't have the ability to get there on their own. With this, we did open an adult crisis house in Dodge City in January of this year. We've had a children's crisis house for several years. This helps us provide treatment to people without having to go to a psychiatric unit. So while at either crisis house, people can have daily therapy and they get medication started or adjusted. They may be there for twenty-four hours, they may be there for three or four days. It depends on what the person needs. And we're very thankful to K-Dads for giving us money to fund that. Even with that funding, those are two programs that are pretty much always going to be in the red because you just can't fund hiring people to work twenty-four seven and not always being full. And especially with adults, they're typically not funded. So we are just taking them free of charge. We also entered into a mobile crisis grant with K-Dads. So now when we are on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, as we've always been, we have a case manager or a mental health assistant with us so that we can do more of going to the person. Unfortunately, we still have a lot of people who see the emergency room as their resource when they're in crisis, and it's good because they do have a place to go, but it's very expensive for them. It's a lot of resources the hospital has to utilize, and then too many times, law enforcement also gets called in, and now their resources are being utilized. So we're going to people's homes. This has only been going on for about nine months? Yeah, so the longer we do it, we, we think the word will get out a little bit more. We do a lot of promotion of nine-eight-eight. Another thing that we've been doing is competency to stand trial evaluations and restoration. We've had one completed restoration in Hamilton County. So what typically happens if someone is found not competent to stand trial is they sit in jail for eighteen months on average until they can get transferred to LARNED for a ninety-day restoration. So we got staff trained. We were able to get someone restored to competency in six weeks. So he can now proceed with his trial, and the jail's not going to have the added expense of having this person for a long period of time. I was in Topeka last week and just learned that K-Dads is willing to use some of these dollars to pay for medication. That's how we got the person restored because he was extremely psychotic, had to get on medicine, which the judge ordered, and then again, in six weeks versus eighteen months to two years. And we've seen people in jail for longer waiting for restoration than their sentence would be if they would have been able to go to trial. And that's, that's wrong, and it's very expensive for the counties. Open access is one of our biggest changes. We no longer schedule for people to come in if they have not been seen at Compass before. We just say, come on in, and we get them seen. We thought we were doing really good with same day, next day, getting people in either the day they call or the next day. We ran our stats. We had a thirty percent no-show rate. So now we don't schedule people because if they schedule to come see us tomorrow at ten AM, maybe they have a work meeting tomorrow at ten AM and they can't come in. So they can come at noon instead if that's what works better for them. Also, I'm going to point you to this little wheel. This is, we are provisionally certified as a certified community behavioral health clinic. We should be fully certified by the end of this summer. With this, we have increased our services to veterans. We now have a veteran peer support provider, and we have approximately a hundred and four veterans in services that we are now providing intensive services to, most of which, again, we're not going to get paid for because the insurance that they have does not pay for the services that we provide. We also added drug and alcohol services at a higher level. It'll be interesting to pull our stats and see how many services we've done like in 2023, 2024, and then even looking into 2025 when we come back after that year. But we should be able to do more evaluations and more treatment and just really treat people for both mental health and substance use. And I did want to say, adding on to what Mark said, it, it is a travesty that that waitlist is as long as it is. Fortunately, which I say that lightly, but some of the people on that waitlist have mental health issues, so we are able to serve them. We don't have a waitlist for our services. So if they have Medicaid, we're able to provide services and bill for those. Not quite as intense as they'll get when they get off the waiting list, but it is something to help them and their families.
I just want to point out the legislature failed to pass Medicaid for all despite its overwhelming support, both in Garden City and in the state. Speaker of the House pulled that fill out of the committee. That was Bill Clifford's assigned committee. Their vote was made but not recorded, so no one has to be accountable for any vote that was made in this year's legislature about Medicaid for all. Disappointing from this chair's position because of the very fact that you can provide services if they had some available Medicaid coverage. The comment that I would like to make is, is that your adult facility is the only adult facility in western Kansas, correct?
Correct.
She said yes.
And also the only child's facility.
I was getting to that. The item that's not anywhere in the presentation, but only because of my position on being assigned to this board, is that we have a pharmacy in development?
A pharmacy that opened. Yes.
So then the last thing that was on your presentation submitted was hopefully the hiring of a nurse practitioner to help with continuum of care of the whole person. Could you address that just for a little bit of how that's going to help us in Finney County and southwest Kansas take care of the whole person?
So again, we serve a lot of people that don't have funding or people that have Medicaid. And primary care typically has a restriction on a percentage of people that they will serve that have Medicaid. Also, we have new employees who move here, and they can have a chronic health condition, and even with private health insurance, they can have a six-month wait to get established with the primary care provider. So there is a shortage, just like, I mean, Mark brought about earlier, in, in all service providers. So if we could have primary care, we're probably looking at maybe two or three days a week. That seems to be kind of a, a national trend. They could take care of people that don't have insurance. They could also take care of people that do have insurance but maybe can't get in right away. So if they come see one of our therapists or one of our medical providers and they're like, oh, my gosh, I'm so stuffy, I can't get into the doctor until Thursday, I've already missed two days of work because of this, then we could have them see our provider. Likely, the provider will be in Garden City, so that will be, again, more transportation because we'll be bringing people from our other offices to Garden City to see the provider. And it just makes sense because we do have a pharmacy now that provides both mental health and physical health medications.
You don't have to go to war to be traumatized by events that occur, car crashes, gun wounds, all of those things our first responders get to see. And would you describe for the commission, your efforts in helping first responders with mental health services?
So we have a policy where we do provide free services to all first responders, and we, we're very loose with that. So it, you know, it could be a dispatcher. I've been listening to some podcasts, and, and with that, sometimes you hear the call that was made to nine-one-one, and you can see how difficult being a dispatcher could be. We also offer consultation and ongoing services to anyone who's served on a jury and might have some trauma from what they've been exposed to during that trial.
Very good. Can I open up for commission questions? Are you ready?
Yes.
Lisa, on the, when you're talking about the whole person, do you work with the county health for medical help?
We, we do make referrals, yes, and then they make referrals to us. Yeah, I would say probably every agency in Garden City we're working with. One of the centers, it's in Salina, they have a, like a contract with a place like Express Wellness where they can take people to if, if they need care. But they're just taking people there. They're not paying for it. I, I don't even know how people can possibly get services there because if you don't have insurance, you have to have the money in order to be seen. So we feel like we could include it in our cost of business study with the state, and that's how they determine our rate, and then provide better care for people.
Anything else, Commissioner?
On some of your, you've got three different, or four different regions. Is there an office for every county or just for that region?
We have offices in Garden City, Dodge City, Scott City, and Ulysses. So Scott City covers four counties, the other three all cover three counties. So we're about no further than an hour from any of the cities that we provide, and we do try to promote telehealth. You'll see in here four percent. People in southwest Kansas want live services. Now, I think if they had to travel to Kansas City for an appointment, they would probably be very open, but most people want us to find a way to get to them or them to find a way to get to us.
Any other questions? Go right ahead, sir. Would you make your motion?
I was going to let you have the honor and I'll second it.
No, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the, the, got to get to the right place here. Area mental health budget request under advisement.
Second.
Our CFO is going to have a field day with you calling us area mental health.
You're Jamie.
I'm dating myself. I'm sorry. I think our, our recording secretary here knows what.
I might fix that.
Yeah.
I'm sure the motion was to approve, take under advisement, the Compass Behavioral Health.
I'm sorry.
That was my second.
That was your second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Don't go very far. We're next going to hear from Lisa Southern, the Executive Director of Compass Behavioral Health on the consideration of a local government 2024 emergency solutions grant. Please proceed.
Yes. This is a document that I do believe we bring annually. We try to access funding to help with providing housing to people, and we do this in Finney County and Ford County, and there's no dollars from Ford, Finney or Ford. We just have to have support from both counties that I guess we're going to do good things with this money, and we're going to help people with housing.
All right. The request for us is to have the chairman approve a certification of local government's approval for nonprofit organizations to receive 2024 emergency solution grants, and those will be directed through Compass Behavioral Health. Is there a motion to that effect?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the chairman signed the certification of local government approval for nonprofit organizations receiving 2024 emergency solutions grants to be coordinated by Compass Behavioral Health. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Today is five twenty. All right. That gets us on our agenda down to the bottom of the second page for all those keeping track. We took care of the waiver issue and tabled it, so we will hear now from the administrator and Beth Devers for the fiscal twenty-five behavioral health grant funding application.
Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Beavers, Director of the Finney County Department of Corrections. Lisa and I were in front of you back October of sixth, October sixteenth, presenting this grant, the Juvenile Detention Behavioral Health Services Grant. This grant is funded by KDOC. There was a lack of identifying the financial resources to fund this back in October sixteen. They have since found the funding, so we are here presenting this for one year. It is for thirty-five thousand, or thirty-six thousand five hundred, I apologize. Compass will come in and provide mental health and substance abuse assessments, evaluations, and treatment, and then also care coordination, which is ultimately a continuity of care for when the juveniles leave the facility to get them into the services in their community when they leave.
Is this something we should do, Beth?
Yes, it is. It's very important.
And our source of funding, sir?
KDOC.
Any tax dollars, local budget?
No.
Well, wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the behavioral health grant application.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to sign the grant application. Who's going to sign this thing? Move it. You authorizing the chair to sign?
Yes, sir.
Motion and second? Yes?
Yes.
Moved and seconded for the chair to sign this application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? I'll sign.
Thank you, Commissioners.
This part of the crowd, you can't read his signature.
I resemble that. All right, on our agenda, the next up is bond council presentation from Garth Herman from Gilmore and Bell. Good morning, Garth, and welcome to Garden City.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. As you mentioned, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. Appreciate you having me out here this morning. I've had some conversations with the county manager, and it's my understanding that you would like for me to kind of talk about some of the potential funding options for a couple of large-scale kind of building projects that the county may have, you know, upcoming in its future. So, my plan is to kind of talk through at a fairly high level what are called public building commissions. And as I'm going through that process, I always like to just remind everybody, I don't take personal offense to being interrupted. So, if you have questions or if you have, you know, comments for clarification, please feel free to jump in and, you know, stop me and just kind of let me know if there's anything that I can go over again to kind of help explain what this tool is. So, with that being said, public building commissions are a creature of statute, so they are a separate entity that the county commission could actually create, and they would, in essence, be a financing vehicle for the county to be able to use it to provide the financing for different types of projects. Under state law, how it's written right now, the PBCs are basically able to finance and then lease to the county for the county's use a wide variety of different buildings and facilities, in essence, almost anything that would be used for, you know, county operations or county business. The county could use the public building commission in order to help finance the cost of those projects. Throughout the state of Kansas, I've worked with counties using public building commissions to finance everything from courthouses to law enforcement centers. There have even been, for instance, the Compass Behavioral Health folks who are here before. Some counties have used those to finance different types of, you know, medical clinics and behavioral health facilities, school, or not school district, but, you know, university or higher education buildings, museums, really a wide variety of different types of projects are what counties can use PBCs in order to help them finance those costs. How the PBC works is it's, as I mentioned, it's a creature that is created by the county commission. So, the county commission would adopt a resolution that formally creates the Finney County Public Building Commission. You would appoint a minimum of three members to serve as its governing body. Those governing body members serve at your pleasure. Oftentimes, I have, especially more recently, county commissioners have appointed themselves to serve on the public building commission. That is entirely allowable under state law. Other times, the county commission may appoint, you know, somebody to serve on their behalf, but ultimately, it's all at the pleasure of the county commissioner who appointed that person to serve on the PBC. Once a PBC has been created, then it has the ability to finance projects at the request of the county. So, if the county had a specific project, it would submit that request to the public building commission, usually in the form of county commission resolution that describes the specific project and the amount of financing that would be necessary for that project to be completed. That requesting resolution goes to the public building commission. Public building commission then would adopt its own resolution that formally approves that project and authorizes the issuance of revenue bonds of the PBC to finance the cost of that project. Once the PBC adopts its resolution, that'll get published once a week for two consecutive weeks in the county's official newspaper. After the second publication, there's a 30-day protest period. During that 30 days, if a sufficient number of registered voters in the county sign a written protest against that specific project and turn that written protest into the county clerk, then before the PBC could move forward with issuing the bonds for that, it would have to go to an election. However, assuming that there is no sufficient protest filed during that 30-day period, PBC has the authority to move forward with the issuance of those revenue bonds. Now, I mentioned revenue bonds here. So, these are a little bit different than the county's general obligation bonds that you would otherwise issue, but in some ways, they're still somewhat similar. So, the PBC only has the ability to issue revenue bonds. The PBC has no ability to levy taxes, you know, for itself or anything like that. The only source of funding the PBC gets is from the rental of that facility that it is building. It rents that to a user. That user then obviously pays lease rental payments back to the PBC. PBC takes those lease rental payments to pay off the bonds. And so, that's the only source of funding the PBC gets. So, normally, what will happen is the PBC, at the request of the county, will authorize and finance the project. The PBC leases it to the county for the county's use. Most of the time, when the county enters into a lease, it is subject to annual appropriation. So, every year, you have the ability to not appropriate in budget funds to make that lease payment. Legally, you're allowed to do that. With a PBC lease, that lease is different. You actually have the state law authority to enter into a binding multi-year lease for up to 50 years for the use of that facility. So, what this means is that if the PBC project and the bonds that it's going to issue for that project, let's say that bond repayment is 20 years, the PBC then would enter into a binding 20-year lease with the county. So, for that 20-year period, the county would make its binding lease payments back to the PBC. The PBC then uses that money, like I mentioned, to pay off the bonds. So, in this way, even though they are pure revenue bonds of the public building commission, they are a binding commitment, the lease obligation is a binding commitment of the county for the term of that lease. That lease then is repaid from any available source of funds that the county has, which may include property taxes, but it's not required to include property taxes. So, if this is a project that falls within the scope of what, you know, you may be allowed to use some of your existing sales tax revenues on, you could use those sales tax revenues to help offset your lease payments. Any other source of funds that you may have coming in, those would also be eligible so long as it's legally permissible to be able to use to make those lease payments back to the PBC. Ultimately, though, it would be a binding commitment that if there's no other source of funds available, you wouldn't be able to tap into your property taxes to make those payments. Because of that very strong security, these PBC revenue bonds, they look a lot like the county's general obligation bonds. And so, what that means is that if you're doing a PBC bond issue, it is going to have a lower rate of interest on it than a annual appropriation lease or something like that because an annual appropriation lease is going to be a little bit more risky. There's the ability of the county to get out of that versus a binding multi-year commitment, which looks a lot more like your general obligation bonds. That's a more secure type of financing, and so the banks, when they submit their interest rates for that type of a financing, it's going to be a lower interest rate because it's not going to be as risky.
You've circled around, and three times I'm focused on what's the benefit of the county building versus just doing it direct. The county building commission seems to me to be another step of government, creating a quasi-ministerial corporation under the authority from this commission, much like a water district. Then it has financing options under state statute. We still have a petition and protest alternative for the viewing public versus general obligation bonds, which have the same statutory requirement and protest in order to have a vote on it. So, what's the difference?
Similar, a little bit, yeah. So, with the PBC, and those are great questions. So, with the public building commission, it's the notice and protest. Some of the projects that the county may do would, if you were doing them with a general obligation bond, it would require an election. If the project is more than $300,000 for a county public building, that would require an election for that project and for the county GO bonds if you're going to go that route. With the public building commission, the public still has the opportunity for an input, but it doesn't require the election unless a certain amount of the voters say, "County, county public building commission, we want to vote on this before you proceed with it." So, it's a little bit of a more streamlined process. There's still that opportunity for the public input, but it doesn't require all of the bells and whistles of going straight to an election. So, that's one benefit there.
I appreciate that, but why would we want to circumvent the public's vote on a general obligation bond, especially of this size for our community? Because we're talking 30 million or more.
Yeah.
Might as well get the elephant out in the room.
Yeah.
And it's a big number. And explain to me why we wouldn't want to just develop our project and do a good job of getting voter approval versus creating a bypass system that then requires the voters to act in order to contest a proposed revenue obligation.
And that's a good question, and that gets to the second benefit of the public building commission. So, under state law, counties have a general obligation debt limit. It's equal to 3% of your assessed valuation. And for general obligation bonds that are issued generally to finance building-type projects, the amount of those general obligation bonds counts against that 3% debt limit. And so, a lot of counties then will use a public building commission because those public building commission bonds do not count against that 3% limit. And so, it kind of comes up in two different ways. One way is a county may just not have sufficient debt limit to do a larger-scale project that they need to do. If they were going to do it with general obligation bonds, whether they have an election or not. And so, that's where the PBC would make a lot of sense then to still allow that county to do the needed project, but do it in a way that you still meet state law requirements. The second benefit from it not counting against your debt limit is if you have other projects that you may need to issue general obligation bonds for that would also count against your debt limit. If you have, you know, county road projects or something like that, where if you do the large-scale building project and if it eats up most of your debt limit capacity, then you don't have the remaining authority to do other necessary projects, like those road projects or something like that. So, there's another example then where counties will use this in order to help preserve some of the debt limit capacity for projects that you can't use a PBC for, but that you know, you know, sometime in the next five or 10 or 15 years, you may have, you know, that multimillion-dollar road project or something like that that would count against your debt limit. So, the counties will use it as a planning tool to make sure then that they have the capacity and they have the ability in the future to still meet some of those other needs.
So, streamlined determination in order to get the building project approved with the community building commission, two, avoid debt limit issues, three, I'm waiting. What's the third?
Well, those are the main ones, to still be able to provide public input without the necessity of holding an election every time, as well as providing the debt limit exception to provide that flexibility and capacity to the county for maybe this project and for future projects.
Explain how you would get additional public input using a CBC?
Well, with the public building commission, because when the public building commission adopts a resolution, so we have this specific project and we want to issue revenue bonds for $30 million, the notice of that gets published twice, and then there's that 30-day protest. So, if there are a sufficient amount of citizens who are qualified electors of the county who want to push that project to a vote, they have the opportunity to do that. And that, and by using that mechanism, which is built into the PBC law, that's a way for the public to still provide input without the cost and time of going straight to the election.
Well, I hope, I'll get right to you, Commissioners. I hope that the folks that are going to be watching this bond issue, whether it's revenue bond or general obligation bond, are listening to this presentation because these are people that are going to give us the feedback on which is the best way to proceed. So, really, thank you, and you've done a wonderful job of answering my direct questions to the benefit of a CB, Public Building Commission. We'll go with the chairman of the building project, Mr. Dries, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Jones.
I think realistically, this will apply first to our health department building because if I'm not mistaken, we'll fall maybe, what, $4 million short of sales tax income at that point of completion?
Yes, it could.
And that would allow us to, a very easy way to fund the remaining balance. Question I might have, you say we lease back to the county that facility. At the end of the lease, does the PBC transfer title to the county then, or does it continue to own the building?
It depends on how you would like for it to happen. In most situations, once the bonds have been paid off, the leases unwind, and the facility itself either stays with the county if the county had ownership originally, or the PBC transfers ownership to the county. Because for the most part, the PBCs, they don't have their own staff. They're a tool to be used by the county, and so they don't have the wherewithal, normally speaking, for kind of the ongoing management and operation of those facilities. So, generally speaking, at the end of the term of that lease, at the end of the term of those bonds, the PBC says, "County, here's your project. Keep running it like you've been running it the last 20 years."
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Duane asked one of my questions, how things happen at the end of when things are paid off. You just mentioned earlier that several counties or some counties are using three commissioners as board members on this public building commission. What happens to the Kansas Open Meetings Act? Do we have to open that meeting up? Is there making plans?
Yes. So, whenever there would be a public building commission meeting, then in essence, if you're having it, you know, let's say if we were having it today, then in essence, at the end of your county commission meeting, you would adjourn that, and then you would open up the meeting of the Finney County Public Building Commission, and it's a public entity. So, it would be subject to the same, you know, open meeting requirements, open records requirements, that type of thing.
And my second question, we're kind of talking, in my opinion, two different projects. One of them's a health department EMC facility, new, and one of them is a remodel, if you will, of the law enforcement center. Since the county already owns the law enforcement center, might it make sense, as I sit here, thinking we go the old way, so to speak, with general obligation bonds, and maybe consider your local building commission on the new building? Would that make sense to separate those two out?
It can. So, if we, even if we would do a public building commission for the medical project and the law enforcement project, we would still probably want to do two separate bond issues. Usually, it's, it makes more sense to keep each bond issue tied only to the facility that it is making the improvements to. And the reason for that is because of that lease-based structure. Now, I will say, though, kind of to your specific question about, well, the county already owns the courthouse as opposed to the new build, I've had multiple counties who are in that exact situation, and they would still use a public building commission. In that case, instead of transferring ownership outright to the PBC, you simply lease the courthouse to the PBC, and then the PBC leases it back to you. So, it's a lease, lease back. Once you get to that point, though, then it's the same process. So, the PBC has leased it back to the county for whatever term the lease is, whatever term the bonds are. Once that lease is paid off and those bonds are paid off, it's the same thing. That lease unwinds. The lease where the county had leased it to the PBC, that one unwinds as well because it is expired pursuant to its terms. So, in that situation, the county has ownership. At the end of the day, you retain ownership of the courthouse, and for the same beneficial reasons about debt limit and providing flexibility in the future, that's why I say I've still had some counties in that situation who have still used the public building commission to do the improvements and renovations to your existing facility because those benefits are still there.
Appreciate it.
Couple of questions. You said, you made the comment earlier on that the rates of these bonds are a lot less than a GO bonds.
Not less, but they'll be more similar to the GO bonds as opposed to just a county annual appropriation lease. county annual appropriation lease. Yep.
Um, second question. The, the buyer of these bonds, are they tax-exempt also?
Depending on the use of the facility, but most likely, yes, the, the bonds would be tax-exempt. So the interest that whoever owns those bonds would get, that would be tax-exempt, yes.
Also, I'd kind of go back to the chairman's question. It appears that we're going around the voters, you know, basically. And if you want to build a big project, you go to the vote, voters and see if they're up or down on it. Um, I still have a little heartburn over that, exactly how that's, by doing this. I know there's protests they can file, but the chances of getting people to do that, I don't know.
Yeah.
How long has this been in existence?
Uh, since the mid nineteen sixties.
Okay. So it's been around a long time then?
Yeah. And, and so I, I think one way to think about it might be, you know, state law authorizes, you know, whether it's counties or cities or, or whatever the political subdivision is, they, 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 state law says if you want to do certain types of projects, here's the steps you take. But, but sometimes under state law, it might be the same type of project, but it says, here's option A to do it, here's option B to do it, here's option C to do it. And then it's kind of up to, you know, the specific county or the specific city to determine which of the options they want to use to get to that same spot.
Just ironic that all these years we've done buildings, I've near even heard of this option.
Well, thanks for in, uh, the education, but I'm, I'm back to another fundamental question. Uh, liability insurance and casualty insurance is much more expensive for a tenant than an owner. Uh, how does the Public Building Commission insure its buildings, and can we cover it under the one umbrella from the county, or do we create a second entity to, to insure these buildings on a long-term basis?
So I, I can provide, to the best of my knowledge, kind of how I've seen it done in the past. Now, the, the specifics of it, that might be a better question, either maybe for the county councillor or for whoever your, your insurance provider is. But what I've seen in the past on these types of projects is, since it is a, a county facility and a county building that the county is operating, that it normally falls underneath the county's umbrella coverage. So you will still have, you know, your general liability, you'll still have your property, um, you know, your property damage, if you have workers' compensation, those types of things. You know, part of the financing is whoever buys the bonds is going to want to make sure that there is sufficient insurance available in case something happens to that building or something happens in that building. And so what I, like I said, what I've seen is that the county has been able to include these projects, you know, under their existing policies, so long as their policy limits, you know, would, would be able to handle, you know, whatever the, the full scope of the assets of the county are that would be subject to that insurance.
I'm going to compare Garth to a water district that is created solely under the authority of a county commission under the Water Appropriations Act. It's been around since forty-five also. But the water district doesn't try to come to the county to ensure its assets. It's its own legal entity, as would the Public Building Commission. Let's call it the Fannie County Public Building Commission, as a new quasi-municipal corporation.
Mm-hmm.
Would have its own right to have its own Fed ID number, its own employees, the whole nine yards, if I'm understanding this correctly. And, uh, how do we dovetail insurance over a separate legal entity and still be able to include it within our policy?
I, I think that would probably be best directed to the insurance carrier. Yep.
Well, that's one of my fundamental questions on this is because I think circling back to you as bond council, you couldn't recommend to us to do this without making sure that we understood the insurance costs and had good estimates on it, and had full-service providers being able to fill in the blanks on those material questions, because the last thing I think you want is to have revenue bonds out there without adequate insurance behind them.
Yep. And, and for your benefit also. You know, obviously, you know, you don't want to build a brand-new building if it doesn't have sufficient coverage, and then if, God forbid, something happened to it, then the bonds are still out there, and there's not sufficient insurance proceeds to either pay off those bonds or rebuild that facility. Yep.
Does anybody else in Fannie County, any of our other entities, have the ability to have a building commission, or is it just the Board of Fannie County Commission?
Uh, any, any city would also have. So the, the Public Building Commission law applies to cities and counties.
Do they have their own public commission, or do we only have one commission?
Each city could have its own also. To my knowledge, I, I don't, I don't work with Garden City, so I'm not sure if Garden City has a public building commission. Um, and to my knowledge, I don't believe that any of the other cities in Fannie County have one.
All right. I've taken away too much time. Commissioners, did you have questions?
It is phone number, because we'll have questions.
Well, you can look him up. That, that firm, there's not a lot of bond counsel in our state, and we've used these guys for a long time.
Robert?
Um, you have sheriff's office here. Just wondered if they had any questions. I came to listen to this potential option.
Okay. And Chairman Dries of the Building Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this really truly applies first to our health EMS building. The Sheriff LEC project that's, that's down the road, but this built, this EMS health building is, is, it's moving forward faster, and we already have approval from the taxpayers via the sales tax, which was dedicated to this building. But again, that one's gonna, we're not going to have the cash at the end of completion to write the check. So I, I think this is probably a really good fit for that particular facility.
And your three percent debt limit?
Pardon?
Your three percent debt limit. I mean, that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, and our, and our debt limit. That debt limit is very key.
Sure your microphone's on, Madam Clerk?
I was gonna say, I believe our, I believe our debt limit would be like eighteen million, right? Approximately. Um, and so if this is a thirty-million-dollar project, wouldn't be possible with, without the PBC.
Chairman Jones, I have a-
Yes, sir.
-do have a couple of other questions for Garth.
Please proceed.
Um, one of them, we talked before, about exemption under the debt limit for certain projects that are retired utilizing a sales tax. Would any of the LEC, um, be under that?
It, it possibly, and, and here's where it's going to get very, it's, it's going to be determined based on the specifics of the project. And so, and I, unfortunately, I don't have that statute in front of me, but it talks about, um, you know, bonds for county courthouses.
Courthouses, jails, and law enforcement centers.
Okay. And then is, is there a specific county limitation on that also?
I don't see it within, and I'm looking at ten-three oh-
Three oh seven. Okay. Yep. And so with that process, and so if there were a county sales tax that authorized bonds for that type of a project, then those bonds would not count against the debt limit. If the bonds were not issued in conjunction with that sales tax, there's a process that the county can go through to, in essence, uh, retroactively pledge that sales tax to that specific project. And so, once again, that would go through a notice and protest to provide the opportunity for public input. Assuming that there is no sufficient protest filed against that pledge, then the county would have the authority to both issue general obligation bonds for that project and pledge the sales tax, the existing sales tax, uh, to the repayment of those bonds, which would then allow it to be exempt under that general exemption in ten-three oh seven.
My, my second question has to do with potential, um, charter resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are three counties in the state that have a debt limitation of thirty percent. Is it possible for Fannie County to charter onto that? And there, it's, it's Franklin, Norton, and Wyandotte. Is, is that a possibility?
That would take legislation. So the, a, a county's ability to use its own rule power to do charter resolutions is statutory in nineteen-one oh one and one oh one A. And the legislature has provided specific areas of the law and specific laws that a county cannot change by charter resolution.
Okay.
Um, your, your debt limit, that three percent debt limit, that is one of the, the things that state law has said you, no, no matter which county you are, you cannot change your three percent by charter. If you want to change that, you have to get legislation to provide a specific exception, like Franklin and Wyandotte have.
Okay. And I know from a municipal standpoint that a few years back, Jackson City went to the state legislators to-
They got, they got bumped up to forty.
Yeah, to forty. And that was the, I think, beginning of that forty percent.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So I didn't know if that was available for-
And, and, and so just kind of big picture, counties generally three percent debt limit, except for the specific ones you mentioned, and cities generally have thirty percent, because they usually have a smaller valuation than the county at large does. Yep.
As bond counsel, do you give recommendations as to a combination of these, uh, services, or should we wait until the next legislative session with regard to funding, to see if we can get relief from the legislature as to the three percent limitation? Do we use a combination of sales tax under ten-three oh seven, so the viewing public knows that that's a sales tax statute? Uh, and then, of course, we have our other discussion on Fannie County Public Building Commission as a proposal.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything in that formula?
No, that, that's, that's a beautiful summary.
All right. Well, Garth, we have a lot to learn.
Okay.
And we'll need your help learning along the way. To me, the most fundamental thing is for the, the public and the taxpayers to understand that we're not trying to circumvent their rights and responsibilities of taxpayers when we're going to, uh, cause or create indebtedness that must be paid for by them. And one thing that I've learned in short order sitting in this chair is, is that it doesn't take the locals very long to let you know what they think of an idea. Uh, but your presentation today has been very thoughtful, very direct, and, uh, it seems to me that we are left with a summation of avoiding the debt limit law because of the size of our project, and two, we still have an available remedy for taxpayers who believe that the proposed project is too much. If I've missed something, let me know, because I'm going to tell the folks that if they don't log on and watch your presentation, it doesn't do me any good to try to regurgitate what seasoned counsel from Bell and, Gilmore and Bell told us about what we're trying to do. So make sure you got your driving, uh, skills down, because you're going to be back.
[laughing]
I assure you. And, uh, commissioners, I've take, I've spoken too much, but have any other questions or comments to bond counsel?
No.
Mr. Administrator?
No, I just want to thank him for making the trip and educating us more on this process.
Yes. I, I appreciate it and appreciate, uh, everybody's time this morning. And if you need to get ahold of me, if you have questions or if you need clarification, uh, Robert has my number, has my email address. Uh, please contact me as, as often as you need to.
We have one favor. Would you buy something before you leave town? We need the sales tax.
Oh, I'm, you can, you can guarantee I'm going to stop for lunch here in town, so.
Thank you.
Hold it. Bond counsel not only stayed the night.
[laughing]
Never mind, I, that's-
Appreciate your, your presentation.
Well, hopefully he has two other presentations so that he can recover that from all of these.
[laughing] Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you, Robert.
We're going to move right into, uh, the next item. This has to be one of our longest meetings in my tenure. Uh, Board Governance, Madam Clerk?
Uh, nothing, nothing new added there. The standard reports. I did update the community events. We got a, a new list from Convention and Visitors Bureau. So the second page with the community events is, is updated with all the things for this summer.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any staff or commissioners have any remarks or questions about Board Governance, meetings, and events? Okay, we'll move on then to Development Update. And for her multiple trips to the microphone today, please announce.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I just have a few updates for you this morning. Um, first is Country Acres. Uh, we are working on the RHID to bring that before you. Um, that's in progress. You will also be seeing a replat coming here soon. Uh, they are going to be doing, uh, they're going to be combining two lots into one. The, um, uh, buyer wanted to have the two lots to have two acres instead of the one acre, uh, and there's a easement that is in between them. So that's why it would be coming before you, is they're wanting to vacate that easement. Um, next is Randall Estates. They are still working on constructing the roads and the ditches. Um, I was out there last week. They're coming along pretty well. They're putting down some of the final material. Um, and they've done some compaction testing, and those are coming back good. So, and that's all I have for you this morning. Do you have any questions for me?
I do know. Commissioners?
No.
Just a comment. There is a home already started on, on, uh, Country Acres. Is that not correct?
Yes, we did allow them to get permits. Um, all that we're waiting for them to finish on the infrastructure is installing the signage. So we went ahead and said that they could start building the house. Uh, they just can't get a certificate of, of occupancy issued until we have accepted the infrastructure.
Think you'll get that before they're finished, but appreciate you.
I think so. Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A question. Would you, uh, consider perhaps, if it's not too much trouble asking, your GIS office, if they would go, mind go fly the new, these developments as roads and water are built in them, so that, we're looking at, at aerial photography here that's, it's old.
Yeah, I can definitely have them go do that.
Have time to do that. I know they're busy, but that would be very helpful to see what's going on.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, nothing else? We'll move ahead then with, um, reports. Uh, is there anything from the administrators?
A few things. Uh, just as a reminder, we do have Justice Planners, Inc. coming into town for interviews on the stakeholders on the LEC project. They'll be in here the first week in June to have specific, um, uh, interviews. I'm, I'm setting those up. I should have the, um, agenda out, uh, this, this afternoon on that. Um, also, uh, received late last week, the, uh, construction manager at risk contract. I'll ship that over to Kara for visual pleasure and review. And that is for the, um, Health Department EMS project.
Very good, thank you.
And, um, to address Commissioner Dries', uh, comments on potential, uh, funding and financing for the, um, for that same project, EMS Health Department, um, we're working on, uh, presenting you with a proposal, uh, on that, um, probably in the fourth quarter of this year here. Um, once, as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll know how much we have that we can put initially towards that project. And then, once again, you do have the option to issue temporary construction notes for that, and those are renewable up to four years. So that may be a mechanism to complete that, uh, project and do it in a thrifty time.
That would be our own money.
That is correct. Yes.
All right. So if I may, just so I can make sure I'm understanding, we wouldn't have to do a Community Building Commission in order to finish the EMS-
That's what I'm working-
-building. We could use our own temporary notes, this project.
That's correct. That's what I'm working on. Yes. That's correct, that's what I'm working on, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
You have any questions for me?
Yeah, well, I was waiting till the person with the empty trailer went roaring by, but our new sound system here is working wonderfully. And, uh, do you have anything else for us today?
No, that, that is it.
All right.
Say it again? I'm sorry.
Not likely. Thirty? No, I would just like to commend the treasurer and the report that I saw last month. You weren't here to address this, and I don't require you to come to address this. I just want to, uh, give some credit where credits due, that your continued, uh, investment of our idle funds is very, very helpful in meeting the demands. And also, we look forward to the same or similar type in twenty twenty-five for budgeting purposes, so keep up the hard work. Also, if one of these outside agencies has idle funds, as suggested by Vice Chairman Jones, uh, I would hope that you would take the time to assist them in getting, uh, a quality rate for their idle funds to assist with the budgeting. Uh, I know that our Register of Deeds is here. Uh, I know that you might be here for a specific purpose, but do you have a public purpose that, for you to be here? Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here, thank you.
Excuse me, I was reminded that, um, we have you attending the, uh, department head meeting for the, uh, auditors on the-
Fourth.
And we were going to talk about, uh, possibly one other commissioner attending that?
That'd be great, who can attend? I was, Jenny, who'd you have in mind? Yeah, I'm putting you on the spot because that way they cannot blame the chair, but rather you.
We have, we have had various ones throughout the years. We just generally ask for two. Um, your, your second lawn has also attended. I believe Dave and Duane have also attended, so.
I-
I don't think we have a preference at whoever it fits into their schedule best.
All right, well, I have volunteered me to meet on June fourth with the auditors, do the pre-audit report and review. Uh, I do have that, uh, pre-audit written report with me, and it's about this thick, and it's good news. So, which of you three would like to volunteer to meet with us on June fourth at eight AM?
Dave's volunteered.
Oh, Dave didn't.
Oh.
Hand up.
He put your hand up, I thought-
Pointing.
Oh.
Well, I, I need one of you, according to the-
I'll, I'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jones will be our second person.
Okay.
We're meeting with the auditors on the fourth at nine AM. And then also- Eight AM, excuse me, can't even repeat the sentence. Late in the day. We also have a very important process of Justice Planners being here, Mr. Administrator. And from the chair's position, I want to remind everyone of the stakeholders involved of the need to participate and get the information to Justice Planners. We've appointed you to facilitate that, but from this chair, asking all of those people that have information that needs to get to the Justice Planners to get it to them timely. Don't wait until the fourth and fifth to get the information. We need it, and we need it now. Now would be a good time. Anything else, Mr. Administrator, that I can assist in that regard?
Not at this moment, thank you though, appreciate that.
Okay, I think the message is clear. And remember, we do budgeting here next month. That's the best way I know how to encourage that. Uh, anything else? Uh, we'll get to the county councilor here shortly. With regard to those meetings, uh, building updates, anything else? All right, county councilor?
Just talk briefly on, um, tax sale in those properties, just, um, for the commission's information, there've been, or at least the information I've received, there's been four more properties that have, um, paid since our last meeting. Uh, if I did my math correctly, that was eight thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and four cents that was paid, um, from the last meeting to today. I was just a little curious, going back from the original list that we, um, started with, looking at this one to where we're at now. Started the process at forty-two properties. We are down to twenty-three properties at this point in time that are facing, um, that tax foreclosure sale. Um, the total paid-
How much money were we owed?
The, well, the total paid?
No.
Getting us from there to there? Um, I did not do the math for the total amount that we were owed. I could go back and do that. I did look at the total amount that's been paid during that time. And once again, if I did my math correctly, uh, it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents that have been paid to get us from the forty-two properties down to the twenty-three properties. I can do the math and look at how much we're owed on, um, the rest of them that are remaining.
Please provide that information to all the commissioners when they respond to Commissioner Jones, please.
I can do that.
And, uh, for all the twenty-one who are left-
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, now that I got corrected again. For the twenty-three who are listening and own property and haven't paid your taxes, get your taxes paid. Otherwise, you're going to get sued. So, uh, that's the fun part. Uh, all four commissioners on this side of the world, we have to pay our taxes, as will you. That ends my part of that. Uh, county councilor, is there, uh, a need for an executive session on non-elected personnel?
Uh, there is a, a, uh, item on our agenda for that executive session for non-elected personnel.
And who are the people that you need for that?
I believe that, uh, that would be- Stephanie Shockley from the, um, Register of Deeds office.
Kelly's planning on being there? Kelly?
Yep, Kelly Munyon from, um, Human Resources. Um, myself, the administrator, and the assistant admini- administrator.
And the length of time for our executive session?
Thirty?
Fifteen? Thirty, fifteen? You're covering thirteen?
Kelly was covering it. Why don't we do twenty minutes? If we need more, come back in.
Twenty minutes, uh, gets us back at twelve oh two. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
No move, Mr. Chairman, as stated.
All right, and the five people as stated, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn to executive session, including the five people mentioned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, we're in executive session, we'll be back at twelve oh two.